I'll reconvene the Fountain County Council for October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, so everyone had a chance to look at your minutes from the September ninth, September seventeenth, and September thirtieth meeting that was then. Are there any additions or corrections to any of those minutes? During that, are there motions approved now?
I'll make the motion.
That one, is that on? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is Crossroads Solar Project. Are there any things?
Uh, so we started the day, I feel like I could answer questions or, you know, but again, once again, we sort of wanted to notice about four or two. It looks like it's about the E D A, as I understand it, so, um, you know, um. I guess I could introduce something like Colin here. So I think, you know, we were noticed on the last, you're late in the last council meeting, that we're gonna be on the agenda, so. Uh, we realized that we need to keep on, um, the conversation that happened. So, you know, one of them kind of answered some of the questions that came up, we saw on that video. Well, again, I wasn't there, it was my quick video, so I just wanted to clarify one or two things could be. Um, so Crossroads Solar LLC is our solar project that's, you know, it's been a long, but there has been up on the wall for a long time. Uh, uh, project that Ranger Power developed. Um, and that, uh, did a degree in being this, uh, constructing and owning and operating. But Crossroads Solar is the project, and all agreements have been made, uh, under the Crossroads Solar LLC. Uh, that's pretty common structure, and part of the reason we do that is because. Um, you know, this project is very specific to the areas and it, you know, uh, answers required by the county and by the, uh, you know, neighbors and community that it sits in. And so we designed that project very specifically for that area. Um, uh, but, you know, uh, I'm on the development dot com, I've been to the meetings for a long time, working through, and getting this project, and all its agreements in place. So, you know, kind of where, you know, we should, uh, assist the community and so forth. Uh, and that's where, you know, the, the development side is good at, again, there's the bedroom side, which is the owner operator side, and construction side, and that's what they're good at, is owning and operating renewable assets, you know, and so on. And so, uh, I just want to introduce my colleague Daniel Norris, who will be, uh, joining me, you know, as we, um. Move forward on the Crossroads Solar project, and, you know, see, you know, you have any questions, uh, for us and for him, and, you know. Honestly, we're also here to find out a little bit, you know, what, what you guys are, you know, goes on the docket there.
Yeah, it's great to meet you. My name is Daniel Norris. Like Colin said, I think a good way to describe our split is he's been the development manager, main reporting contact. I'll be coming in as taking construction manager for the rest of that day. Really looking forward to working with all y'all, answering your questions. I can come to these meetings every month, however frequently y'all would like. Um, we're gonna be good partners and good neighbors through the lifecycle of the project. I really wanna work together with y'all. Thank you. And I'll share my contact information. I gave all y'all a ring last week. You guys showed my number, but you can put it in the meeting minutes. And anyone can give me a call.
I guess our biggest concern is that we have two different maps, and if you guys gave the city of Petersburg a different map than what was given to Roger. Uh, you have a lot of areas marked that you were planning to do work on this, not on the original.
I think yes, that's probably just why I come back to this beginning. We weren't here, we saw, we weren't sure what, if that, uh, map was given. We didn't provide anything into the town of Petersburg, but it's a, uh, permitted map, you know, that's, since we got it, we said, yes, permits. Uh, everything's kind of in those bounds. Uh, we did, uh, in twenty twenty one, there was some confusion about sort of, uh, the, um. Jurisdiction of the town of Petersburg, in their E T, okay, so we went to a bunch of towns of Petersburg, you know, it's back then. Uh, and they issued a resolution regarding jurisdiction over our project. Uh, but there wasn't a map associated with that resolution. There was just a resolution about Crossroads Solar, and then they referred to, I think, out of the, you know, area. I can't remember exactly, north of seven, north, I think it was, and west of, um, Corporation Line Road, and like, just around the town of his lies. Um, so that's, that's the only time really, uh, where, you know, attending Petersburg, and I think there was some big, any kind of map there, I don't know. I, I guess I was confused. You know, where, I guess I haven't seen the year Petersburg first, and I'm not sure who gave that Petersburg map. Um, I, I saw a map with some like parcels colored in, but again, I, I just am not totally sure where that came from. If it didn't come from me or from Daniel, then it should probably not be relied upon, but I don't know. You know, it could be somebody else just colored their map, but I wouldn't put it still.
Yeah, building on what Colin said, I think that's an added to that, but plans that were submitted to Roger and approved by the county engineer is what we're gonna build out in the field. We're not gonna D D A them without coming back to this council or to Roger.
And I'm, I'm Nikki Schultz, I represent, uh, Crossroads, just to clarify also. We listened to the concerns, uh, from the recording of last meeting, and we appreciate you continuing this so that we can keep here today. After that meeting, we sent to your council, and hopefully that can be distributed to you, uh, more information about that map, and it, it has. And that, that, sorry, that, that memorandum did address that map. It clarified that the map given to Roger is the accurate map. So hopefully that clarifies, there are not two maps running around, and what is, but we're not here to say two are the right maps, there is one map. And that memo that we provided to Powell clarifies that. So we're happy to answer any questions, but as Colin said. There is not a map that you should be relying on that is different than the map that was given to Roger Azar.
Now, is there any question?
So the map that you checked. The map that I got on my phone, you're, you're north of seventy-four. Are you east out to Division Road? I'm talking Petersburg down to the east and north of Petersburg is that, that's Division Road. Are you that deep? Are you that far east? Cause I, I don't see you colored in anything on my phone, but I do see you north of seventy-four and also, uh, Public City.
West, west of, uh, what is that, Corporation?
Yeah, here's Corporation Line Road, and you're west of that, and you're north, and is Crossroads. Is that the only land that you had pursued? And what information do our council, oh, is that the only parcels that we are being involved with?
Your only, yes, council, yeah, E R A, everything, it, it all only implies to, to, uh, parcels that we do with time, that, that, you know, a contract, it's crossroads over. You know, the landowners are married, you know, now, the role that they walked in, who had a term with you, that kind of thing, and then we receive a permit. On those parcels and those parcels alone, uh, you know, based on demonstrating, you know, uh, that, that contract, you know. Demonstrating, you know, uh, the ability to apply the permit there. We've not permitted or sought, you know, to affect any of your, any parcel, even neighboring parcels that we have. Uh, you know, land control, you know, that we have a contract with. I don't know if that answered your question, but yeah, it's, it's only what we've permitted, and that's it.
Colin, my concern. We discussed this. My concern, Colin, is, um. You know, I've read the report from the attorney and so on and so forth. And when we first started, I never heard of Desiree. But I know who they are now. I got a resolution from Petersburg, cause I went to the board meetings. Have you heard of anybody coming into your area asking to put in solar units? And at the time, they hadn't, but later I got a paper, a resolution where they had declined what you were mentioning a few months. So my, my concern is, now about the rest of the council. Is that when this all came about. That we heard Crossroads. Then all these other names came into play. And that makes me start to think, who owned you? So I've had many calls. So Colin, you know what, I'm telling people. As a council member. All I wanna do is get it done right. Get the information right. And I'm not gonna be okay. I have not seen a permit in our hands, in this council's hands. And when I read that booklet, I didn't see Crossroads' names. I saw ours. I didn't see yours. That kind of bothers me a little bit, Colin, because I gotta vote. I've got to explain my position. I've done it many times. And now he, people, why are you gonna vote? I tell them, you know what, I'm not gonna vote until I hear all the information I haven't heard yet. So I wanna see that permit. I've read about the decommissioning, I saw the road use, I've read all of that. I found out that Desiree is now, if you go back and read the first page of that, of that bulletin, what that pamphlet, what are you gonna call that? Hand it out, you get about the second page, you find out Desiree's in there, and it's kind of hidden. Give it, just give me a second. This is right here. Supposedly he has another copy, I guess. I don't know, but this is what I got. And so, so you just asked me, that what our concerns are, what my concern is. Our concern is mine, it says, will the land in the project revert to foreign ownership? Almost all over ninety percent of the land in Crossroads Solar Project will not change ownership. Right? The project is entered into a long-term lease with the majority of the landowners that will expire. Once the project is fully decommissioned and the land restored to its current farmable condition. The project will be owned by a U S company, the fifth largest owner operator of renewable assets in the country. I looked up Desiree, they're the fifth largest. And so that's, and Colin, and, and Taylor, this is what I was referring to the other day, when you get that information. This is where I read it, and then, uh, but I have Colin on the, on, on behalf, on behalf of the syllabus. I have wrote, I have read where there is a decommissioning unit. I have read where there's road, road use. I have read how much money you're going to put up after all of this becomes, you know, twenty-five years, thirty years down the road. I have read that. I begin to wonder, that's not enough money. I got ten million bucks, and if I'm gonna have to replace a lot of farmers' land, I'm a little bit concerned that may not be enough money. So what I mean is I wanna get it done right for you and for the county. That's all I have, and that's what I'm doing.
So I think the vote that you're referring to, maybe provided the council in July, I believe.
Yeah.
Right, so that's, you know, this is part of why I was, so you bring up a lot of great points, Tom, I, you know, I totally understand, I think the ten million dollars, that's referenced in areas that, that, you know, that. The company has to be valued more than that, you know, we certainly are, you know, we're for Desiree's and each company, um. And so, you know, that's just about about the, the size of the company. The bond itself is a, is a different, different amount. Based on real numbers, you know, about what it costs to decommission things to return to farm. Um, but, you know, back to the point that you were making, which is that you have these concerns, you have these questions.
Yeah.
See, from our perspective, you know, we, we keep providing the information, we keep reaching out to the council, you know, the information reading from is provided in July. And yet it seems like in the last hearing, you kind of still have questions on, on the information we provided, you know. Obviously, this goes back to even, you know, our, our baby E D A that we worked on, you know, through, we were entering from two into three. And, you know, uh, what we, what we're confused about is why. You know, you know, we're not getting kind of reached, you know, communicated with. If you have a furnace desire to find out information from us, we are open books. We wanna, we wanna provide information. We attend meetings, we reach out to you. There's no ex parte rules for county council, you know, it's. Every county that works in there, there's free and flowing information, and, and, you know, and that's been the case in Fountain County until the past couple of months, and so. You know, we, we, uh, we just are here because we wanna be, we wanna answer the questions. We think we've answered most of them to date, you know, and, and wanna continue doing so, providing information. You know, people will find out about the project for the first time, you know, all of a sudden, you know, these days, that's totally understandable, and that's why Daniel and I are here, you know, to try to answer those questions. But we are, I do wanna confirm that, you know, everything we've done has been by Fountain County's rules. According to, you know, requirements by the county, by the townships, by the landowners, by the neighbors, and, uh, you know, we'll continue to do that. Um, and, uh, you know, and everything is done under the Crossroads Solar LLC so that. Whenever, you know, that project has to go by by the rules that the county has set forth. That, you know, the township is set for, and that our landowners have set for, so that's, that, those are the operating principles under the Crossroads Solar LLC, you know. You know, I, I just, I, I'm not, I don't, can't explain the, the intricacies of LLC law or anything like that, but it's common, you know, and, and, you know, we see a lot of. Landowners, but there are land in LLCs, your business is operating under LLCs, and, you know, it's a pretty common structure where, you know, it, it allows for different people to work under that LLC, but. At the end of the day, agreement that is contracted through that LLC, you know, that's what has to be honored, you know, that, and ours is designed to follow the land. And so anything that happened within those permitted parcels basically has to follow those rules. Uh, and, and it produces those benefits as well, you know, the E D A goes significant, so the, the economic development agreement based on a investment in that area, so.
So therefore, Desiree.
Well, Desiree is a part of that, works under that LLC, basically, is an owner of that LLC.
So but, but at the end.
Sorry.
But she, but at the end, with all this, all this material, at the end of all this project, in twenty-five, thirty years, I wanna know. Who's responsible? Is it Desiree? Is it Crossroads?
It's, I mean, it's Crossroads, it's.
But Desiree is, Desiree is completing the development. Because at what I read on my phone right here, I thought that was pretty good, what I got and what I read. But I felt it was pretty good, but it sounds like to me that Desiree is now, after you're concluded with your proportion of it, Colin, with Crossroads. Then, then there's another company, what is the company that started with a P or?
Sorry, uh, Crossroads is not as dumb though. Crossroads goes the life of the project.
But at the end, it says in this comment, Desiree will pick up the development of the project from here on.
Crossroads Solar Project.
Crossroads, which is now really, it's an arm of Desiree. Is, it's, it's Desiree, huh?
Yes.
Yes.
We will be.
So I don't wanna hear, so I don't wanna hear.
We will be controlling the projects and then owning it through the life of operations, making sure we're good stewarding the laws in operations, and then we will pay to decommission the project. Return it back to farmland, and the folks that we're currently leasing the land from can do whatever they would like on it.
Mr. Norris, now I'm going, what, what do you want from us?
I want y'all to ask any questions you want. Feel like you can reach us at any point during the project and know that I'm here as your partner while we're through construction and into operations.
The reason why I got more questions is because we've been, uh, we've been messing with this since, uh, January one of two thousand twenty-four. Before that, in December twenty-three, and, um. New things, uh, Mr. Norris, pop up in front of us. Like today, there may be new information, is that right? Doesn't it? And so therefore, if you got questions, we're here today, instead of us having another meeting. Let's get it out and, and see where we are. And, uh, so until it's done right for me, whether it be commissioned, whether it be the council, whether it be Roger Azar, with whoever it might be. Um, I certainly would like to get it squared away. This is right. Legally settled down the road, Fountain County is gonna be okay. And a neighbor, you know, somebody asking, what would you do? What would you do? How would you correct this? Not on the limb a little bit, Norris, Mr. Norris, I'm talking a little bit, you know that. Fountain County, I talk a little bit. Because, um, kinda wanna, wanna find out about, um, these solar cells. And you know what, uh, if they're common, fine, that's, I mean, that's, I can't, I can't hold back everything, but I am concerned about the setbacks. I, I'm concerned about setbacks. Regardless whether it be solar cells or whatever it might be that might, might affect another neighbor, because I'm getting this through, council, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but, um, I don't mean to hold the floor, I don't. But, um, these are concerns of mine, and, and the setbacks are important. For a lot of different things, and, and so. And I understand too, Colin, that even if there's setbacks, and a farmer has these fields, they can still farm around these containers.
Right.
So, you know, thank you for listening.
They were what, what Tom's talking about, and what they're doing is.
You mean with the business structure?
Yeah.
Yes, for sure. I mean, like he said, it's. It's no different than, I mean, I know some of you have LLCs, people are interacting with the LLCs, sometimes you're the sole person. Where, you know, if I'm an LLC and I'm working with Dale, he knows it's me, right, it's how I'll see. Um, sometimes I might have employees, he's dealing with how I'll see. He's dealing with the employees. I would still own it, or whoever owns it still owns it, same idea, just with a corporate structure, right? I mean, I think.
But what I'm saying is that the commissioner, council, and the Crossroads, and you're, and you're taking everything sent down.
Yes, I mean, we've, we've, we've heard a lot, we've spent a lot of time talking about solar itself and the idea of solar and. It being in the county, but as far as this E D A that was done last March, um, and the investment expansion's been done since. Yes, I, I think everything is, at least from the council's perspective, is.
Sort of like the council did in, in their first signature, it was on, okay, the E R A and the abatement.
We were just bullied into doing it. Unfortunately, because Tim Schumaker stood right there and said, and I quote, they are coming whether you give them an abatement or not. And I sat there and I sat here and I told him, I said, do not back me in a corner. I didn't appreciate that, and I felt like our vote. Was, we were bullied, I, I feel, I don't know about anybody else, but I feel we were bullied into doing it. And I also feel like the way the ordinance is structured. It was in favor of the, of these companies coming in here, and there was no protection. To the citizens, or very little. Now we find out, we've got a whole new company that's operating under the LLC of Crossroads Solar. They're going to be the developer, the construction, owner operator, am I correct? So Crossrock, Crossroads is going to own it. Per se, but actually the owner's gonna be Desiree, am I correct?
The owner is the, the owner of the project and the permitted entity is Crossroads Solar LLC. That was true then, that is true now, and that'll be true in twenty-five years. Crossroads is who Colin works for, and the way that the company is structured. There are LLCs that handle the phase that is developed, that's what Colin does. There are portions of the company, Desiree, still owned by the same affiliate, right, all one company. That they hand the baton over when it's time to construct, that's Daniel. There are entities that they bring in to bring in trucks and equipment, that's Primboris, which is not affiliate. That's the worker, part of construction, but at the end of the day, I do not want this council to believe that you've been put. Into believing that it was Crossroads, now it's a completely different entity that you never have heard of and that you're permitting, that is not the case. It is one company. There are affiliates, and they pass the baton at different phases. Desiree has been mentioned, we clarified it in the memo that we sent to you personally, and we want you to think. That you were dealing with a brand new company, that is definitely not the case.
How long has Desiree been involved in the project?
From the beginning.
And there's this now.
We.
Recently been telling us about Desiree.
Yeah, we've, we've.
Never brought it up at any other point.
Well, we brought, you know, we sent it over, and lifting Thomas Ford in July, but also I'm pretty sure we brought up the discussions, I mean, honestly, I don't know, I'll look back, I don't know. Again, Desiree can't do anything that Crossroads, that's not within the Crossroads Solar LLC, you know, that's. If they're, you know, they're good when they move, they have a day, rules set for Crossroads Solar, and that's, that's, yeah, that's the overall main structure. It's not, but there's a change in the company so that we can get away with it, thanks, I thought that's the sort of thing I was here. It's, it's so that everyone can do the best job they can, create goals with Crossroads Solar. But that quote is, is a work in existence, you say, that, that's.
I guess the council just feels like they wanna know who all the players are in the room prior to anything.
And, and that's why Daniel's here, you know, that's why, you know, we're, we've been reaching out, you know, trying to make ourselves available on the local practice.
So they've been involved from day one? So when we did the abatement, why was it never mentioned that they were involved?
We consider the construction, Colin, they're not the permit holder. When you pull what approvals that the project has to get from the state level, from federal regulators, from local regulators. The project owner is Crossroads Solar, and so it will be permitted for them to have to be the named permitted entity. They've been involved in terms of knowing the project exists, you know, watching to see when to be handed the baton off for construction. But it's not as though they would have been the appropriate permit holder.
I'm not concerned about whether their name's on the permit, I'm more concerned about who is going to be operating in our county. And that is something we should have known. From day one, if that's the case.
You're a great point, and, and.
I mean, you wouldn't have someone come in and work on your house that just showed up that day, would you, not knowing anything about them?
I mean, I, people hire contractors.
I, I understand that, but if someone's gonna work on my house, I'm gonna know everything there is to, I can possibly know about stuff. I I understand that, but if someone's gonna work on my house, I'm gonna know everything there is to, I can possibly know about that.
And I I understand that and, you know, those are landowners, you know, this project, all this project, you know, it's theirs again. And maybe, you know, you know, uh, the structure here and we better go with them if we got them blue. And the other thing was, I would say is that you do know who's going to account. It's Crossroads Solar LLC, the the person on the other side of all the contracts you've done. It is, you know, this is a huge investment, a huge project that has so many moving parts. That requires different people to do different jobs and so. Uh, what's very important to us, you know, at Crossroads Solar. Is that the same rules that apply to everybody working on a project, you know, that that we know. Boundaries, you know, uh, that are set, you know, people come in your county, Tom brought up setbacks. There's nobody working on Crossroads Solar that can, you know, not obey two hundred foot setback on nonparticipate any partners. So that's, that's all was the issue with the project and, you know, whether it's desert union contract or the property order. Everyone's so bad, they just stay here, you know. Uh, you know, even if, you know, it's a, you know, several hundred million dollar. You know, investment and construction job and this kind of thing, so it's, you know, I can't do all. Uh, much as I, you know, that sounds fun, so there's just different people, but they're all bound by those rules, uh, you know, that that, uh, we haven't said across the solar. So, so, you know, I understand that the basis may change, but you know, you're.
So, let me ask you this. Where does, what state or where you, where is Crossroads Solar located?
Crossroads Solar is located in Fountain County, Falls.
Okay, so the originating company that developed out the LLC, who, where are they located?
Uh, me, I mean, I think.
The company you worked for?
So I work for Ranger Power.
Okay, where are they located?
You know, we, uh, Danny wrote, it's been a hundred and fifty years old. Didn't start it in the past three, four years ago, it's all been, in my opinion. We didn't have one person that came up and checked the neighbors, he said the neighbors, they'd be concerned. If you find this. We were in great minds. We need to. Since we were called us, that don't even live up to the location. It was really aggravating, and I don't think it's torture to give a damn.
I, hey, I got a question for you and for Roger. Um, on the decommissioning contract. Is the BCA supposed to approve that before it goes to commissioners?
I extracted myself from the decommissioning in the road use contract because it became too legal for me to break it all, put over that process. So I stuck to the technical portions. And they dealt with that, uh, that way, so I really can give you a a good answer for that.
Okay.
Um, because I pulled myself out of that, recall, put it on and just ran the list.
Okay, and why I ask is because I just ran where. Marshall County Council filed an injunction against the Marshall County Commissioners because. They signed the decommissioning, uh, resolution and the BCA is supposed to vote for it first.
Mr. Crew, I can let you know, I'm I'm on that case. And the reason that happened or the reason Marshall County is following that path is because unlike Fountain County. Marshall County's ordinance does require the decommissioning agreement to go before the BCA. That is not the case in your work case. So.
Our measure made it too easy here.
We definitely followed your ordinance.
I've I've got a question. Um, when did Crossroads start soliciting in our county? And we decided to.
Uh, I would, you know, it's last meeting to show up, but, uh, you know, we don't, we don't solicit, um, you know, we. We, um, are the, we're looking for partnerships with plant owners. Uh, we first start entered the county in twenty nineteen.
Wow, that's a, that's a few thousand.
So we were first moved again, uh, it would become set up, doing that in this county.
All right, second question, do you help write the ordinance statement? Do you help and anybody? Them establish what our ordinance looks like in the day?
Uh, I was, uh, not here during the ordinance, because I'm, uh, my wife had just been virgins, I was home. Uh, to my knowledge, we came to, you know, members of Ranger Power came to meetings. Uh, and provided input, it was frankly very little. Uh, of interest at the time, you know, we were noticed the same way that's this meeting's noticed. Um, and so, you know, before that ordinance, uh, solar was a permitted use in the county, you know, there was no, you know, there was no setbacks, anything like that. We came and provided input about, you know, what we're seeing on the counties, you know, development, every thought, you know. You know, to your point, Tom, like we wanted to be done right, so we thought, you know, uh, there was things that we could, expertise we could provide and, oh, you do.
So how our solar ordinance has not been rewrote, you would have been required for the special.
I was burnt to the solar ordinance not to be rewrote, we wouldn't have had to give a permit at all. We would have been able to put put panels to the edge of the road. And, uh, build through kind of everywhere you wanted to, the solar ordinance actually. Establish setbacks and restrictions and required all the things that were viewed in the permit. And much more restrictions than were in place before that.
Because you had, you got a permit to rezone. Because of the zone agriculture, that doesn't mean you get to come in and dispose of a solar farm. You would have had to request the permission to rezone from agriculture to the solar.
Well, sorry, we'll we'll be there, but on the previous permit. Solar was listed as a permitted use in Ag.
I'm talking before that.
What's that, before that?
Before that little blur was added, you would have had to resound.
No, uh, 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 previous plan permission chairman, we, we never had solar permit of. In anywhere.
That was done after two thousand seventeen, when the ABC was brought back in. When they were doing the wind, they did the wind orange and all this done a little blur, added solars permitted use.
After that.
After you.
Two thousand seventeen, okay.
I wouldn't know.
I got a question, and I've had several different times. Who are we in public, hey, are we in public comment? I'm sorry, I don't.
Well, I ain't gonna allow public to ask any questions.
Well, you got it on the agenda, get your business done.
Hey, who wrote the ERA? I'm not gonna forget that, I I've never seen a legal document that some lawyer didn't sign his name to. Who wrote the ERA? And then Ms. Kelly over there asked what state the healthness LLC of. We want to. I think that's a fair, I would say we're not gonna give you a warrant.
So, well, here's, did you tell Chicago, so I assume the LLC is is, uh. Registered in the state of Illinois?
At least not Indiana.
I believe it's a, uh, Delaware registered LLC, but the company's headquarters, Crossroads Solar's headquarters in all mail directions should be sent to. Uh, at three twenty North Avenue West. It's a Chicago-based company.
What state are you registered as an LLC?
I believe it's a Delaware LLC.
There's three states in the Union. That an LLC, the people are not required to give information that I can find, one of them is Delaware and the other is New Mexico. Is that true?
Did you have another question?
No, except what was in your note. On the text was that Crossroads being the original owner, being the owner. But Desiree controls that. I'm just reading and so if that's words. And the word to me, Matt, Desiree owns you. If they control you, do they own you? You know, I'm I'm just reading from this study.
They're, you know, necessarily, you know, this this project and all our projects require a lot of capital from. Uh, and, uh, they are, they're, they are part of that capital, so they're, but the, but the, but the most important thing. Is that whoever they are, they have to follow the rules that are in the laws for uses, then the the permits, resolutions. You know, the the, uh. You know, the the items approval, you know, every, every approval basically comes from the federal. Down the, the, with landowners and that kind of thing, this is Crossroads Solar for this project, so that. It does not matter who who is behind Crossroads Solar, because they are still required to do. What has been required, you know, by the county and by the landowners and by everybody, you know, uh, that has anything to do with this project.
So therefore, I I'm just repeating what I read, this is the project team. Said the project has always been owned by Crossroads. Which in turn has always been owned in part. And ultimately controlled. By Desiree. Ranger Power assists Desiree. On every solar project. I won't go ahead and read the rest of it, so I guess you're saying that. But Desiree. Plays a pretty heavy part.
We're, it's, it's, it's helpful to think of us as one company. And where the development arm and Desiree's the construction owner operator, so that's true in our projects in Shelby County, uh, you know, where the power's sold to you. And that's, you know, that Desiree's building and operating, that prove our Michigan project, we have our Illinois projects, Wisconsin. You know, that's, that's, that is the the structure of most of our projects.
And the farmers protected. Of course, they had their agreement, you had your agreement with the farmers, they're all protected. So when it comes to us as a county government. And we we pass things. We wanna know, we pass it for everybody that is, that we've made the right judgment. So that's where I am. And, uh, because people, why is that? Why is not that, so I'm, I'm, uh, it's just words and I'm gonna make sure they're right. Thank you, Colin.
So have you? Has your map changed?
It cannot change, for what was permitted and what, you know, the map that we showed throughout all the permits. You cannot change that without going back and getting a new, you know, permit or going through a whole new process and. As we understand it right now, it's not obvious anymore, Colin, and that's, yeah, that's, those are the, those are the, the largest limits where we are built there.
And that's the map that was in Roger's permit, but then the map you put into the memo that you sent out October seventh is a smaller area.
That's right, these are the outer boundaries of where we can.
There are still more than one map.
So, sorry, yeah, we, we understand the permits kind of be like the outer limits, you know, where the restrictions are, where we can interact with neighbors and things like that, but you understand, you know. You know, within those, those limits, that's.
I, I mean, I guess. I'd like to speak to who wrote the ERA, because I had issues with that from the beginning, who wrote it to begin with? That I could not, I don't remember, I don't know what attorney wrote that, but when we voted on that in one of my first meetings. I wasn't comfortable with it because we had too many questions, too many things were kind of wishy-washy, same place we're at, what, nineteen months later? But one of the issues with that ERA was. We had major concerns because it called that land junk. The wording was awful, Jeff brought up, that was horrible, and one of your attorneys stood up. With a piece of paper and said, if you don't like that wording, here, how about we word it way to be a little nicer? But still follow the statute and the law. So one of your attorneys rewrote that. So that we would pass it and it was passed not by everybody, but it passed with your wording in there. Just to make it. Go through, again, we were bullied into making it look good. Don't, I had a problem with mixing attorney language in one document at that time, and that is when we said we wanted our own attorney. So there are issues with who wrote that ERA, it wasn't done clean from the beginning. There was, I mean, we're in the same spot nineteen months later and we shouldn't.
Well, I was the attorney here.
I remember.
Yeah, and what happened was there was language written, someone on the council had a problem with the language. And it it was, you're right, the the implication was that this was blighted, uh, property. And, uh, this, the statute read in a manner, we we talked through it and I suggested language. Didn't bully anyone, I said, if you are more comfortable with this, here is language. I believe that someone took down that language, there was discussion, there was a motion, there was a second, there was a vote. It was asked, and subsequently. We circled back, I believe with the auditor, and that language was reflected in the economic revitalization area resolution. So it it was not a bullying situation, uh, from my perspective. Number one, number two, that issue of how that statute reads has been the, has been the subject of case law. And and I can provide that to you, it is not the case that you have to agree that the territory is divided. And that it's not good for anything else. Instead, the case law essentially says, and I am paraphrasing, that that land could be used and put to better use, better higher economic use. And that was the spirit that was trying to be conveyed in the language that was discussed that day. We've been verifying what my role was there.
But at the same time, you you can't change the statute under which we allow a ERA. I mean, that statute has to be used and that language has to be used to establish a ERA.
And I didn't try to change the statute.
Are we, we, we don't pass or we we rescind the ERA and. Are we in league of jeopardy?
You have to believe them. Um, the question is if you rescind the ERA and the EDA, so. The ERA is the boundary line within which. The project could be built and then that leads to the tax abatement, that is the structure that supports the EDA. So if essentially the EDA goes away and there is no tax abatement. And there is no contribution because there, in lieu of the tax abatement, uh, the company was gonna make.
Right.
The contribution payments to the county, um. What that does is take away those elements of the project. So does it, I'm not sure if you're asking me, does that legally compromise the project?
That our, is a counsel in jeopardy.
Oh, well, you have wonderful counsel here, um, I I don't want to, I don't want to give you legal advice, you're, you're. Yeah. I I.
I can't afford your cancer, but I know, but we, I did, I just, I tried.
And and we did try with all due respect, we did try to convey in our letters.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree, thanks.
The lady, you know, my position, uh, opposing ERAs and tax abatement for solar has been fairly consistent and forceful. In the past, I expressed my concerns about solar, I expressed my concerns about. Our solar ordinance, our zoning ordinance and how we call that is, uh. At the same time, I feel, uh, we entered into a legal agreement with this company and I I think we have to abide by that agreement. That's my position in this.
Anybody else have any questions?
Well, the politician brought up on the BCA. What she had said that in our county, that's not required of them to re- to retain one of those. And so. Well, I said, I wanna see it done right. Then what is it that we don't know? So we make it right. What is it that we don't know, this BCA, we just can't let it pass? Somebody wanna read me Fountain County's BZA. Ordinance. Does anybody have the I don't? If I don't, I don't have it right.
This, with respect, what we are required and what you are required to follow is the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance has, I believe it's Article nine. All of the procedures that this county has to follow to consider whether to allow. A commercial solar energy system, CSES, to come into the county. One of the primary first requirements of that ordinance that Fountain County has passed is that a CSES permit be awarded. Crossroads Solar applied for that CSES permit, it was reviewed, I believe, by Mr. Azar and others. And that CSES permit was granted and conveyed and it has been provided to you. At least in the binder that that I created for this council and I think in Jilbab. There are. Other requirements, once you get the CSES permit, that have to be followed such as. Road use issues, decommissioning issues, drainage issues, bike plant issues. And Crossroads Solar, and you can speak to to Mr. Azar, I'm sure he can answer your particular questions. Crossroads Solar has followed all of those. To answer your question about the BZA. The point I wanna be clear about is, Mr. Crew have mentioned Marshall County. Marshall County's commercial solar ordinance is different than yours. In that solar ordinance, it says that they have to have the decommissioning agreement approved by their BZA. You, Fountain County, do not have that requirement, so there is nothing more that needs to be done. By way of going to a board of zoning appeals, the CSES permit has been given. To my knowledge, Crossroads has met and satisfied every requirement under the CSES permit. The only thing left legally for Crossroads to do is to post the decommissioning bond and the road use bond. Which I believe we are days away, um, from completing, we are waiting for some feedback back. From Mr. Azar and or Mr. Colin. So, to our knowledge, we have faithfully complied with every element of the law. We have binding agreements with this body, with commissioners. We have never violated the law. We have not overlooked any of the requirements of any ordinance. And we are legally entitled to be forward, subject to the posting of those bonds.
I read everything you've talked about. I just didn't see. I saw zoning. I just didn't see BZA exploding an eighties in the face. But the rest of it, I didn't read.
Have you started anything with the project?
No, we're waiting on comments and approval from Rick Hall on the bond form. And once he provides that, we will post the decommissioning and the road violation pursuant to construction.
Who's going to be the holder of the bond?
The county.
Well, the county.
Have we not, in your opinion, all our eyes crossed and our eyes dotted in the cross on the ordinance? Please, I mean, guys, you can't have a chance to score.
Yeah, we, 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 you know, uh, yeah, we'll be different. Exactly right. And you're posting a bond that's frankly.
Anytime during construction, the county is going to be responding. And your part of the county roads, I would say, is there anything in the agreement that says you're going to take care of the roads during construction because you could do the hell out of them? On the way. I don't care after. I don't care getting back to where they were. I care that the county residents' roads are taken care of during construction.
And that's.
And that's going to fall.
It's a ball of account.
It's a ball of account. I've talked about. Explicitly deleted bad solar ordinance and explicitly deleted. A lot of other things that have been done in the county. I want things taken care of and. I want our road taken care of during construction.
That's the problem. We were told that the road use agreement and the decommissioning agreement. Were all signed and in place before we voted on the ERA and the tax amendment. And they were signed five months afterwards. And I would never agree to the road use or the decommissioning plan that was signed by our commissioners. And that is why I cannot vote to. I'm going to vote to rescind, no. No matter what anyone else does is. I was misled and. And I can't go. Anyone else?
There was something to be done about that.
And we're, we're telling the road during construction? Yes, definitely. So you're going to see a lot of trucks out there that say Primoris. They're not going to say Desri. Uh, Primoris is the general contractor. He is the owner's rep. Representing Desri, we hired Primoris, who's a general contractor and an expert in solar installation. With their contract, if we hold between them, they're required to maintain the road during construction. The majority of our construction is going to happen next year in 2025. And as they're progressing, they will repair the road and then fully remediate it back to its original conditions at the end of construction, near the end of next year.
If that's not what's in the road use agreement now.
Well, at that point, you know, we're trying to go above and beyond. That's why Daniel's here and why we'll continue to show up. And so if there's a particular instance, you know, something happened to the road, you can be responsive, you know, in real time, hold it or adopt what's required.
I believe that also states if it goes to litigation, the county pays all the expenses of litigation and we don't agree with the road use.
We hired a third party BS engineering to analyze the road and they're the ones that came up with the road bond number. It wasn't behind the column making that calculation. It was at the recommendation of the county to use them. So I can't comment on the actual amount that's being posted. They had solely sponsored those and. The council, people of councils agree to it.
Can I, can I ask the council question? Is any of them concerned about? The, um, owners of that land and what they want to use it for? They're right. If we rescind it.
What, well, I got a question about. Why have they purchased a hundred and twenty-six acres from the White family? What, what? You, you, you're leasing all this property, but yet you buy a hundred and twenty-six acres.
Well, it was like that, that's the contract the landowners were interested in. I grabbed an eye during the details. I was between us and them, but you know. It was, it was what they were interested in. First of all.
Is there going to be batteries or anything on any of this property?
Um, I understand that the storage or batteries require a separate permitting process and a separate development process. No, this is a solar project. This will be permanent once we're going forward.
Now or in the future? Now or in the future?
We're focused on this project right now. I can't, you know, if they, if the, if the county decides to create a ordinance that allows for storage. Or you don't afford that much, you're going to be able to, uh, that side of the project. But, you know, we're just operating the Crossroads Solar, etc.
And has there been, has been any other land purchased under the so-called permit? That we have, I haven't seen, have you purchased any other land? Right here under the, the same permit in which we signed the resolution we signed. That day, has there been any other new land purchased? Under Crossroads?
They're. Not sure we recorded the shot. No, the map can't expand. The map can't change. So that's what we're permanent for. And that's the only thing I, you know, that's where construction and the project can lay.
But since April, since two twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three. And then January of two thousand twenty-four, nothing has been bought by Crossroads. Under that permit.
Well, the only purchase was that agreement with, you know, that lawyer's firm, you know, we talked about. Yeah, I don't, no.
The reason why I thought is the resolution we signed and the permit we, the resolution we signed for the economic development land. Jeff, I'm going to get back to your question here in a minute. Is that there's nothing else been bought under that situation related to Fountain County. Council signing off, commissioner signing off on that resolution.
The most that that resolution could affect is that map and to back to this point. You know, it'll only affect where the project actually is. So it could be even smaller footprint than what then what was allowed, but only those, those parcels that were, you know, that are within the project.
My next question then is, as Jeff asked the council question, whether to rescind or not rescind. And do I have any problem with the company? Uh, you know, right now, I read what you have. Our lawyer's here. He has it. He can, he can help us. He can help us. But today. I want to answer Jeff's question because. Within that question. Not only the company. Do we want to make sure it's the right company? To help me out? Then Jim's question about the roads. And you said a third company looked at them? Can I, before I make my decision, can I see that? Can I see whether you change that? If you can, because Jim has a, has a point. We signed off on that. All we're trying to do, I'm not nitpicking Colin. I'm not trying to nitpick. I'm just trying to get it right. Can we see that in writing? Would you change that, madam lawyer? You understand what I'm asking? On that decommission, on the roads? You know?
Nothing's changed. Crossroads Solar has been required to do, but it's been required to do this for a while. That's, that's. We hire a contractor to do the roads because Daniel and I aren't very good at filling potholes. You know, that's, that's it. You know, uh, and so, but it's Crossroads Solar, so we're part of a union. And it's our practice, as Daniel described, repair the roads as, as we're going through construction. And if somebody, if somebody wants to point to a specific area of road or something that's an issue, Daniel will respond very quickly.
Do you see what I'm asking him? I'm with you. Do you understand what I'm asking him? I mean, and Jeff, you understand because you said, we're okay with the company, but are we not okay with the wording within? That decommission, right? There's some wording in there that we don't like. Denise doesn't like it.
Then they're obeying our law as it's written. It's a.
You can't go back and change it.
Our zoning ordinance is hugely deficient. I've spoken to this issue before, but they're complying with a hugely deficient zoning ordinance. I've spoken about this before in client commission meetings and commissioner meetings. They're complying with what our law is. And what else can you do?
And that's why we voted for a moratorium so we could fix it.
Is Crossroads, Ranger Power, Desri. Are they owned by any foreign company at all?
Or investors.
Or investors, any foreign investors that own.
All American based, or American.
Hundred percent, all of these are based, are owned by US companies.
From what I read, they started a company in New York to do this. So now it is all right. It's owned in New York.
Virgin Land. County. Where we live is a county road. They know, county road, one way in, one way out. We've got two bridges buried in there. My mother-in-law, ninety-two years old. If something happens, this dead end road. And they can't get out, what's going to happen? Who's going to take care of it? One lane, the seventy-four, where there can be a road through. It is a county road. It's going to stay a county road. I'm concerned. Now you take care of it, but what's going to happen? You got twelve-foot bridge, combine any road through. You get a big truck in there stuck. What's going to happen?
Or the way.
You can't wait till the next day. Got to get an Amazon road. Emergency, what's going to happen?
I have a couple of questions. One. Can the road use agreement be amended? Taylor, that's a question for you.
I mean, any agreement can always be amended. I don't think the, the council's a party to that.
No, we're not, but I'm asking on behalf of the.
Parties. As the parties to really any agreement can agree, then yeah, any agreement could be.
My second question is the purchase of the hundred and twenty-six acres. Was it, was the project permitted based off of leased acres? Or does it matter? And does purchasing the hundred and twenty-six acres change the permit? If it was based off of leased acres?
I don't think ownership would matter. Was they owned the whole thing or leased the entire thing? Yeah, I don't think the ownership of it matters if the. If it in there specifically said so many leased acres, I mean, they get leased themselves, right? They wouldn't need to. So I, I think that's just semantics and that would mean.
I have always felt, and I made it clear during the meeting in which we voted. For the EDA and, and the abatement. That. I felt like we were making a deal with the devil. What was going to happen? To. People that had to live around it. Versus. The project. And I've always said that. I cannot tell people what to do with their property. You know, I wouldn't want it done from, to me. And I'm not going to do it to somebody else. That was. Partially why. I voted for the EDA. And the abatement. You know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty. If we could all do something different in our life and go back and change things, we probably would. I think if I had the opportunity to vote differently back then. I would. Based off of. What we've learned in the last few months. I asked a question of Colin at the meeting in the courtroom. If this abatement was never there, would the project continue? And he told me, yes, it would continue regardless. I wish things were different. I wish the ordinance was different. I felt like. I'm not going to say all commissioners because it wasn't all commissioners, but I felt like there were maybe one or two commissioners that. Were hell-bent. On getting solar in this county. And they did it to the detriment of everybody else. I.
They did it at the detriment of not a trade of law.
Exactly. And so. We find ourselves in a predicament. A big predicament that's going to affect a lot of people. And. Doing the right thing sometimes is hard. It's a hard decision. Whether you're for the abatement or against the abatement. But I just have this niggle in the back of my mind that something isn't right. I don't know what it is. I can't put my finger on it completely. But there's something that doesn't sit well with me. And. That's why I feel like I need to vote to rescind the abatement. If they're going to come regardless. There's just the road use agreement. I know we can't go back and change it. We can't rewrite history. But we damn sure moving forward. Make it. Right.
But. As far as my question. The landowners, I mean, we have to. Consider them so. They agree. I mean, I, I would tell, they don't, nobody tells me what I should do in my home.
No.
Nobody tells you what to do.
And I'm not telling them what to do. They, they stated in a meet, open meeting that they're coming, whether they have the abatement or not.
But they zone out your post right. Your farm is not. Also, it's allowed solar and a few other plans here.
So you go down here, tell me what I can, can't do.
ERA doesn't affect the landowner. ERA does not, you don't have to land over. The contract still goes.
I don't know what you're talking.
The ERA does not affect the landowner.
What is the downside to, what is the downside? To giving the ten-year abatement? That's what I want to know. Everybody talking about it, but what's the downside? The upside is you get seven point eight million dollars. To do with as you want for this county. What's the downside?
The down, the downside is without the abatement, they pay property tax day one, once it's operational. Which is far outweighs the, the abatement. The abatement is for five years. Then they get five years of. Nothing.
Uh, we do pay property taxes from day one, even though we made them because there's, uh, the, uh, state passed a law that changes the, uh, way that. Landowners panels get assessed. There's an increase in the debt we pay, but that actually still would decrease possibly, uh, uh, the taxes in the area, uh, around the town from project. Which will be, uh, still be a problem. Or a tax decrease, uh, even under the abatement scenario. Uh, and then I, I, you know, there's no direct impact to landowners except that, you know, seven point eight million dollars can have, can invest in the sort of public. Obviously, public benefit and we've got effects local landowners and everybody else.
I'm ready for the question. Okay, I'm ready to see them. Someone wants to make a motion?
I make the motion. How do you want me to word it? Rescind?
Rescind, modify.
By making any changes.
You have to say what.
There you go. What's your motion?
You can say.
I make the motion to rescind. The. The ERA. For the EDA, agree with the EDA?
Is there a second for that?
Not going to second that because I want the word modify. I haven't, I haven't got my question answered yet. So I'm not going to go A or N. I want to modify. Is the clue going to have it? Would you rescind it or not? You still have to have some organization.
You still have to have some organization. And, and I asked him just now on his road use, I want to see it modified, I want to see it writing.
But is that up to the commissioners?
Yeah, so we don't have.
We have nothing, that's, we got to stay in our lane.
Let the commissioner get the job done. What do you say?
Instead of modifying, you wanted, you want more information.
I want more information. That's what, that's, the commissioners get the job done. Don't pass the buck down to us.
That's not modifying the agreement, so that's tabling.
And the ten, the permit will probably be issued today, so they can start instructions.
And the problem with tabling it and letting the commissioners do their job, we've got two commissioners that have drug their feet on other things. I don't know that they would do anything.
I, I'm going to say in motion, throw it on.
Okay. So, Kelly, in the motion to rescind. In second. And all those in favor of the uh, motion to rescind, raise your hand. Those opposed?
Only one in case. I want to see it modified.
So it's five to two, to rescind it. Okay, go on. Reported collections is committed. Our motion to acknowledge the reported collections for the health department and quarter for August, the ambulance board, the department reporter and chair.
I'll make the motion.
In solid favor? Review and acknowledge the bank reconciliation monthly comparison report. Uh, treasurer's bank reconciliation for September twenty twenty-four, one with a monthly comparison report. Their motion to acknowledge second? Yes.
I'll second.
Second?
I will.
All, all those in favor? Review and acknowledge clerk's monthly report for August twenty twenty-four, so motion to, uh, second.
I will.
Yeah, it's second.
I will.
Denise? All those in favor? Sorry, Tom. So now we have uh, additional appropriations. I'll open the hearing at ten, twelve AM. Is there any public comment on the um, additional appropriations that uh, are presented? Yes, Carol?
Uh, what's this?
That's for that grinder over at the jail. We've started putting that in and you know, that, the total cost is one million, one hundred forty-five thousand five hundred. Is that correct? And we appropriated five hundred of our budget this year out of the special lift tax to pay for that because that is the project at the jail. And the total cost of that grinder is we needed uh, to appropriate more money to pay for that. That'll take care of that, with what we already have budgeted, that'll pay for all the work to, to be done on, on the grinder at the jail. That'll please the city of, our town Petersburg. Plug in their pipes with all the stuff, prisoners throw down the grain.
Why does that happen? Why do we even allow that? Is there no recourse? Add a little time to their sentence or something like that that you can do?
I say the same thing.
They're wagging the dog over there.
I don't think their rule followers.
Yeah, I mean, no one's going to sit there while they're on the toilet and see what they're putting down the toilet. I mean.
Well, they got jumped through and it ends up gone and they say they, their toilet's full. They probably know where it came from. That's, because he won't have one.
Right.
You know, they have a panel of everything that's in that room. If they don't, they should.
And maybe that's a question for the judge, if she can add that on to their sentencing or she can, they can put a cost on there. I, I don't know. Taylor, do you know that's?
No, like you can't add on to their sentence.
You can't add on to that.
I mean, potentially you can look at charging them with some other destruction or some other, some other thing, but you can't, sure, something, yes, there's, you could click it, doing something else to them. Yeah, it's just adding on to the sentence. They're in their board, it's not.
The jail, the prison in Rockville had the same issues that was screening. These guys go in shoes, they throw in their electronics, they rest, they go in racks, they throw anything they got.
In the toilets?
Ev- everywhere.
Those must be some powerful toilets.
They, they flushed, they flushed bed sheets. We had to pull bed sheets out of this.
Well, it's not there.
They're not worried about getting their hands tied in jail.
Any other public comment on these um, additional appropriations?
So that non-reverting is also.
No, non-reverting is the money that Warren County pays us for the nine-one-one uh, system. We have a special fund and so we have some extra overtime and part-time help for nine-one-one and we're taking that out of the money from Warren County to, to pay those expenses.
So we're not getting enough money out of the Warren County?
Uh, absolutely, we're not getting enough money in. Hopefully in January, that will change. Any other? Uh, so let me close it here again. My hearing. No more public comment. We'll close the hearing at ten sixteen AM. So we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, uh, lift special purpose, six hundred forty-five thousand five hundred dollars for other services and objectives. And we have non-reverting dispatch. Taking twenty thousand for overtime, four thousand for part-time, a total of six hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars if there are motions to do that.
I make the motion.
Yeah, all of them in favor?
To the end of the year, right?
Yes.
I hope.
Yeah, me too.
Transfer from county general jail from telephone to repair maintenance, fifteen hundred dollars. We have local roads free uh, from gravel. Four thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars, thirty-six cents transferred to contractual services. And, where do you all, the MBH um, cover USI invoices for county, county uh, constructionist. MBH uh, from other repairs to maintenance to greater blade, nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and nineteen cents. County general commissioners, soldier burial, five thousand dollars, transferring to liability insurance. Kium Capital Development Courthouse, five thousand from utilities to janitorial supplies.
On this liability interns, was there, was there not enough money budgeted the year before?
It's increased due to new vehicles. And that's just enough to cover if something might happen to a vehicle or something, because it would be down to six hundred sixty-nine dollars. So that's the reason why I asked for that transfer. It just, a little bit, it's.
Uh, from utilities, one thousand dollars to snowmobile. Under CEDA, county commissioners, a thousand, ten thousand from internet to telephone. That's all the transfers we have. Oh, sorry, I have one more that's not on your list. Uh, Dana, that nine-one-one needs four hundred, wants to transfer four hundred eighty-three dollars from travel mileage to IDEX. Consider uh, IDEX fees raised from two hundred twenty to two hundred ninety-nine dollars thirty cents. So they have that additional one. Is there a motion to uh, approve all those transfers? Denise second. All those in favor? Well, I thought you had the lease.
Well, uh, I, I'll, I'll give, are we, when we get down to Wega, maybe I'll, we'll talk to partner.
Okay, so we have uh, some appropriation reductions as we talked about it at the Lions the other night at the budget meeting. If we reduce the reduction, reduce the budget on some of these MBHs that they're probably not going to spend this year, then it gets, let's uh, BLGFC that we have more money in there and we won't have to cut as much for next year. So we talked about doing these reductions and I think Jason went through his budget and his MBH restricted personal supply, uh, personal services. He can uh, reduce that six thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and supplies seventy-two thousand, so we can complete a reduction of that seventy-eight thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars. MBH unrestricted highway administration, other services and charges, reduce that five thousand. Maintenance and repairs, personal services, twenty-two thousand four hundred thirty dollars, supplies, three thousand. Other services and charges, two thousand five hundred dollars. And under general and distributed personal services, nineteen thousand for a total of fifty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. So is there a motion to uh, approve the above resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, reduce appropriations and funds, eleven seventy-three and eleven seventy-six?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
And second, all those in favor?
That may be the one, way back in that lift space, what was the service?
No, that's for the grinder. Yeah.
That's uh, what we approved the reduction.
Oh my. He want to know what that six forty-five was for. Denise said incubator. If there's a baby at the jail, we have a problem.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, appropriation reduction, AR two five eighty-nine fifty, we get business incubator three hundred thirty-seven thousand nine fifty-three. You want to explain that?
When we approved the budget in twenty twenty-three for twenty twenty-four, I had a certain dollar amount and then three claims came in between October and fifteenth, tenth, in the end of the year, which amounted to like seventy-some thousand dollars. So therefore the appropriation line item is overstated and we need to reduce, to reduce it by this much to agree with the accounting of what has actually been spent from that front of that one item.
And still stays at five hundred thousand.
Yes, it is not.
We're not changing.
It's not changing, five hundred thousand, they have spent two hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred, no, that's what they have, they've spent two hundred forty-three thousand eight oh six thirty-four. They have left to pay two hundred fifty-six thousand one ninety-three. It is, this figure's a little higher because and I can't even point it, but there was an adjustment. And it's just that, it's basically just the timing of when the budget was approved to now. So.
This reduction still leaves on the two fifty, whatever.
Yeah, it'll be correct. Through this reduction, they will have that two hundred fifty-six thousand one fifty.
I'll make the motion.
Denise, second?
No, second.
Kelly, all those in favor?
So this has just been accounting.
Yes, it's straight down.
Probably would you say they had a
Two forty-three. Two fifty-six, one ninety-three point six six. Two fifty-six, one ninety-three point six six.
So can I add a comment there? Uh, we are releasing this week a contract for the exterior of the building for four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars and we have essentially four fifty-nine to spend. So you have two fifty-nine there, we have a hundred thousand from Indiana Landmarks and a hundred thousand from DNR, and so that's how we'll pay for that.
Then Mike, did you want to say anything? I know commissioners have not, even not proved that yet to bring them to us, so those invoices.
Spoken commissioners, although it wasn't in part, they submitted that invoice for the time going to repay minus two, I'm going, they might pay this, but I don't know, ten hours. And I was just the commissioner, talking to her about the possibility of coming directly to the council for, and, and what that invoice covers is the expenses for our environmental and their updates and testing for it and uh, especially in the annex, zoning, health pays for the free uh, survey stand of both the courthouse building and the annex building that we use. Uh, they go over, they use the dimensions and the nature from the surveys to break up final plans for the project. So I hope, we submitted that in the month of June to envoy and uh, then bring it to the council before the end of the year.
Okay, well, commissioners are going to have to vote on it first and then present it to us to vote on it. We can't vote on it before they, they vote on it. Okay, uh, department head reports. Uh, you guys requested last meeting, it's all good to you, uh, if you wanted uh, numbers, run numbers. You guys, um, this was reflects uh, end of September uh, this year and we have a replay of end of September of last year, looking pear and apples, apples. So uh, obviously you're going to see there is difference in numbers between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. I think a lot of what is playing into that is uh, we used to uh, provide uh, when Dr. Wavies was primary doctor out at the Waters Covington, uh, we would uh, transport a lot of uh, patients out of there to Williamsport. And then we would do a return and transfer back and we would do those uh, hospital administration and staff, whatever, if the fund had changed that rule. But we're now very likely, very ambulance to transfer those individuals back uh, to the waters and also um, people back to Fountain Springs and Autumn Trace. Uh, that's not, that number between that does not mean that those were all transfers, okay? Uh, but the majority of those numbers are. Numbers are, they're going to fluctuate up and down, uh, you know, one year may be up, next year may be down. I think that the one thing we have to look at is uh, you know, I think we're, we're going to still hit probably with the numbers in this, we're still probably going to hit like twenty-four to twenty-five hundred numbers, uh, twenty-three hundred, twenty-five, that's still quite a bit of runs. Uh, you got to keep in mind, we have no hospital in our community, so everything's transported out of our community and you're looking thirty to forty minute transport. So total turnaround time is two hours.
So if not more, so, uh. I think what we have staff right now is adequate. Providing to our community, the three trucks that are on twenty-four hours a day. And, uh, twelve-hour truck overflow. So, uh, but you look, uh, through these, this is, you know, obviously transports. SOR, basically, we go to a house. Uh, we do our assessment, patient elects they do not want to go to the hospital, they sign the release, releasing us from taking them to the hospital. Standbys, uh, this could be, uh, going in and do a lift assist, there's no injuries. Uh, you know, the law enforcement calls and wants EMS there to help with whatever's going on. Uh, fire calls, if we have to get instructor fires, uh, we all have an ambulance, I have instructor fire. Make sure we're taking care of the, the firefighters and that that are there or homeowners. Signal nines, those are when we're in route to a scene and we get disregarded, we track that. And one thing that we have been tracking is says helicopter. So we, we track when, you know, we, uh, call for a air medical, um. And have them transport the, the end of the patients.
Were all these ones with the helicopter company that?
The majority of them are, but not all of them, yeah. If you remember, as I told, as I remind, just remember, one of the things the challenge, you know, it's a great program, it has showed that it works. But at the end of the day, the challenge, if they're not available, then we're about to take the other next agency that will provide that.
If, if you could, it'd be nice to know how many are.
The difference.
The difference between the two of them.
Okay.
So we. Make sure, I mean, I think.
Well, I can tell you, I can, I can say one, one helicopter flight, we just had recently out of the Badlands, out, you know, off the Badlands, but. We just had a, I think a recent one, I think they were a resident, it paid for itself right there, was a fifty thousand dollars for a flight. Or closer upwards of that right now.
Yeah.
So, yes, the numbers are, you know, different, I mean, I think there's, you know, but I think. We were, you know, we're gonna end up pretty close at the end of the year. Um, we may be down a little bit, we gotta remember we're coming, we're out of COVID. Even though we didn't transport a lot of COVID patients. COVID really created a huge scare and we were transporting a lot of people, our numbers were up. But with that, transfers, we're not doing anymore. Uh, our numbers are down and they're kind of stabilizing out right now. So I guess my question is, I know you guys asked for that, I guess what's the, what was the reasoning where you concerned? Numbers were down, you thought, or you just wanted to know what the numbers were?
I think we just want to kind of have an idea where we were at. It's nice to see the data.
Okay, and I will tell you collections are up considerably, even though the numbers are down, but the collections are up considerably, um. Different, different person in there doing it a little differently than the last one, not saying the last one didn't do a good job. Just the way they, way we're doing it is differently and we're collecting more money. I will tell you, we are in a challenge right now with Medicare and Medicaid, uh, which we are working on that right now, uh. There's some delays and some payments. Uh, we're, you know, like they'll pay for the, the ambulance bill, but then they don't want to pay for mileage, Medicare is. They keep telling us they're gonna pay us back, pay us, but we're on them every week, every day, making sure. We're gonna get reimbursed for that, Medicaid. They, they constantly change their rules, we're trying to stay on top of that. Any questions? All right, I think I'll wait for the budget if you guys have some about salaries and all that, so. Uh, no, no word on the rebound, uh, so I would say, but on the rebound. We are fully staffed. And we are in the process of, uh, got Parkland coming on and getting them trained. We're gonna help a lot with picking up ships. That's all I got on the department side. What things?
Yeah, let's address Roger, cause he's, I'm sure he got. I mean, we have voted to not allow the, to rescind the economic development, um, the ERA resolution and, uh. Uh, I don't know how that affects you permit wise, but with, you know, you know, tax or maintenance.
Yeah, well, not quite, I just, uh, respect you asking to wait, I wait, everything else, so if you're good with me, I could.
Yeah, for all my. Anybody have any questions for Roger?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Jason.
It's here, you know, I don't really know anything for the guys, but we're, we're still a bit of a maintenance, maintenance equipment, we're in. It is some policies old, you know. It's about everyone, so. Hey, you guys have anything? If we, there's any ways we could take a hundred fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, is Jen here? I guess.
I don't have anything, you guys have any little little functions?
Okay, good.
Okay, so we talked, um. I think last month it was. We combined those. The twelve oh six, eleven sixty-eight, eleven sixty-one, now the state says, yeah, we can't, but. So if we take that money and, and use part of it on the budget. Then you can go to the state and tell them what we like to use it for.
For the, it's, it, we'll use it just the same as we did before, it's carryover funds.
Right, okay. Uh, we're just, you know, I don't like salaries out of four different accounts, I'd like to get this all changed. Uh, and I've, and I've looked at numbers on the, on the money from the state, I've written, put more money into the. Telephone, the, the, uh, internet, the fuel. Blue shots and things and take the salaries and put that in the county general and try to keep all those in.
And if, yes, we can make it work, just keep in mind we will have to go back to the state and the accounts.
Right, okay.
With each of our banks.
Okay, uh, so then, and then they's, um, and I notice, I know, uh, your local health trust account is. We budgeted fifteen thousand fifty-one dollars. And I don't know, I, there's more money than that, there's eighty thousand in it right now. I don't know, y'all let us spend more than the fifteen thousand. Or since it was fifteen thousand, there's no money coming into that now, I don't know.
So, am I hearing correctly, you want to use, you wanna, are you wanting to use some of the eleven fifty-nine salaries and take more out of the eleven sixty-eight? Or the follow-up sits, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, more like, like the, I'd rather take, put all the salaries out of counties.
Okay, take all, okay.
And, and like the fifteen thousand for local health trust accounts. You've got ten thousand liability insurance, environmental equipment insurance, twenty-five hundred gas and oil, it's fifteen thousand, I'd like to. Put that, provided everybody agrees, put that into that account. And then we can, that'll give us more money in the county's health plan for the salaries.
Okay, so you're wanting to use. You're just, are you just wanting to like flip-flop the same number or?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just.
Okay.
Using, we want to use that, that money because we're never gonna get any more from the state.
Okay.
But I like to put all the salaries instead of taking. Some of it's three or four, you definitely sound, okay, one person salary, but all the salaries under one, because it. It's gonna be a nightmare for, uh, a new auditor coming in, trying to take care of all this stuff, those deals that we. Filing on her and, and, and she's gotta try to.
Right.
Maneuver all those differences, it'd be easier if it's all in one, and so I'd like to move some of those. Fund, some of those accounts under the county. And move them into those three trust accounts and put all salaries in the accounts.
And I.
Provide it everybody.
And I will follow up with Dr. Hudson aboard, but I, I would have proved that myself, I think that's a good plan. Um, as far as using of eleven sixty-eight, twelve oh six on those, uh, those balances. Um, something to keep in mind is we do have a new server that we're gonna have to purchase and that could be upward of twenty thousand. Uh, when we re-are, so there, we do have additional expenses. Um, we just kind of put that to the wayside till we determine whether we're gonna get a pre-move, be moving or not. But we're not at the moment, so we do have to get that replaced.
Perfect, yeah, there's that eighty thousand in that problem section, actually, one thousand server, and that's because the state.
Right, and that would be a one-time payout rather than like you're saying, uh, we, uh, you know, every payroll or. We have to do a one less, something like that. Yeah. Paul, did you have a question?
I kind of did, but if you. Two thousand, one building. You would have to wait till the first year to go for a carryover on that fund, correct?
I will have to wait for, after the first of the year.
When does that, they always like come out?
April.
Oh, April, so they, yeah, plenty of time to get approval for that.
Is it your name? I know county, it was in April, it seems like it's been somewhere around there, yeah, um.
So again, so we're just transferring the same dollar amounts into eleven fifty-nine salaries, but we'll still use this. It's way understanding it, I'm, I guess I need to make sure what we are actually doing.
Yeah, we're taking some of the, the county health money, moving it to those three accounts. So that we can do all the salaries out.
All salaries, okay, okay. Okay, then, okay.
And then. She'll get all that put in so you can look over before we do a final vote in two weeks.
That would be perfect.
Yeah, I'll, with everybody today, I, I, I thought of dancing numbers and things, so.
Yeah, Paul, you can let me know what we need there, yeah. I agree with it. Yeah, that we find, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, any other questions?
Thanks, anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks Jenny.
Any other department heads?
Dana and Josh.
Um.
Yeah, I'll put yours.
I have no ideas, this month, just so that everybody's aware, the next time we see, thank you. This month, March, thirty years of service for Wally Booker with the Warren's office. So next time you see him, just say, hey, thanks, we here, it's been thirty years. Um, the story goes that Doug Shelby, sorry, man, thirty years ago on a Saturday night at North Side. So. So, anyway, that's why I.
Okay, we thank you, stay.
You know, what's on the agenda, I'm just gonna go ahead and talk about it really fast, is the E nine one next gen, the grant. Um, it's with WT, which is a nothing. And they started looking into this last year on twenty-third, it was granted to them in September the twenty-sixth of this year. No money out of any of our hands. Um, it's going to do the address points in the center lines for the United States across, they're trying to get it all unified. Um, in the future grant money, they're gonna do the boundaries, so I just wanted to let you guys know that, uh, no money exchanged. Um, they're going to do it and they've granted us with it. Um, Warren County does have that grant as well, we did not go into it together. Due to numbers, it helps that way. Um, I will talk to the commissioners and they will sign it and I'll send it on to them, so just wanted to give you guys that. Four one one, uh, what we've got coming our way with the money for the.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You guys have anything?
That like, I do, I'm gonna cut that out, I'm sold that up here. I do want to thank the council the lately. Improving all the bids to get stuff done finally after ten years. Basically appreciate what I'm doing after four days, turn it down, turn it down, turn it down.
Appreciate all the guys, you've done a great job keeping the courthouse in good shape. Keeping the boilers running.
Good.
Now for now.
Better knock on wood. Good job.
Okay, uh, any other department heads? Yeah, I think, okay. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess before we go into, uh.
Do, we need to talk, because you don't want to talk enough.
Yeah.
We get.
Oh, we don't have a contract, but.
You mean the county?
Yeah, the county commissioners have a.
But we have appropriate money. Or is it, it was, it was, are we still on a secondary contract?
We are, I mean, that is on, that's on.
It's on Wega, I think you're talking about economic development. Right, this is Wega.
The money for the spend on the art of money.
No, and I'm talking about, I'm talking about the two hundred fifty thousand.
That's the economic development.
Yeah, that's in the budget.
That's in the budget.
That's in the budget, this Wega. Extension contracts, what the commissioner signed, maybe we're giving more time to spend the, the five hundred thousand in that. Art of money, right?
Yeah. And I have something else to talk to you about, all of it, but you really take a break.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, let's go, then we'll start on the bench of it. Yeah.
I do have.
Okay. Thank you. I skipped, I said we're going into budget hearing, but above that, that public comment. And Amber has something she'd like to, uh, talk about.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was kind of waiting, so I didn't want to speak out of turn, um. But I do want to address a contract that the commissioner signed October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two to Wigan, regardless of adequate building project. This is the contract, and I want to draw attention to, uh, two point four on the second page. Uh, where it discusses the flow of the building, if within twenty-four months from the execution date of this agreement. Um, if Wega dissolved or ceases to operate as an active nonprofit organization, sells the building. The commissioners have a right to claim a curated share based on the county's contribution to overall cost. Of the building and renovations there are. Of the value of the building and the form of a lien against the real estate. Um, I would like to point out, the county will only receive money back on this building if it's filed up to October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Which is standard of here. Um. Based on this, I would like to say that the county is misinforming the county's citizens on the terms of this agreement. Uh, to the council, I will say that I don't think it's deliberate. You believe that you are, said what you're saying is true based on the September sixth, twenty twenty-two joint meeting. Where they can, the county can request a funds. Uh, the first vote was voted down three, three to one. And as Andrew Hall asked, if there was something about the motion that could be changed in order to support the request. Council would like to see members of Wega Board, include members from all over the county. Since stress the county project cannot be city and adequate progress. Although the city is giving them money towards the project. Council would also like to protect their investment. Passed with a seven oh vote. I don't think that you intended on your investment only being protected for two years. I, I, I don't believe that was the case. Um. The commissioners, I don't know if it was deliberate or not, but they are, whether they're misinforming the county. Um, to Wega, um, the last council meeting with the commissioner or the council, he mentioned. As Dudley was saying, that if it was sold, they would get. Although you knew stipulation that there was a two-year agreement.
I see that right, right?
You knew. I'm assuming you did a contract. So, um. So based on that, what you're giving the city, the council, and say it was partial, harsh. With misinformation, partially incorrect information. I don't know, like I said, I don't believe that it was intended, but, you know, the.
We're unhappy to, uh, go back to our attorney and have her review this, and if it says what you say it says, vote correctly.
The show.
To perfect the investment.
Correct, and, and I, I.
It's not, I. Sorry, the, the vote was three to three, I was the one that abstained because I did not like the agreement. And I, when Andrew asked if there was anything that could be done, I said. As long as, no matter how long it happens, we get our investment is protected. Then I will change my vote, and in fact, the three, other three that voted no, agreed, and we all voted seven oh. But it was through the agreement, there was no two-year, nothing was discussed in that meeting, and two-year agreement, it was, uh, no matter whatever happens if, if they dissolve in that building, so we get a percentage, our percentage that we put into it back. And that's the only way I would have, was going to agree to, to that.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to face it, uh, I need to go back to the attorney and quite understand why it was written that.
I would also prefer, like, clarification on the cost of the building, because if it's a prorated amount. The county gave five hundred thousand, originally initially, we told councils that it was two million dollar investment in the building. So that would mean that the county would only receive twenty-five percent of that. However, you just said, with the county gave five hundred thousand, we got a hundred thousand, one grant, another hundred thousand, one grant, and two hundred different Attica. That means the county actually has more than fifty percent, fifty percent interest in that building, if it's prorated correctly.
Right, there, the, there's another grade coming for the interior. So the total amount is two million, and that would include an additional grade coming from the interior, which is already two million. So, uh, part of, I will correct something that happened in the last, you added the numbers off because you're spending that much on that building. It's not really true, because, uh, the two million dollars includes both the interior of the building, plus the lot next door, which we have to buy, tear down the building, and put in parking and service area. So, the total number of ready dollars is two million, but they're not only staying in that building. So the total number for the building is two million, and you would get five hundred, you'd get your share back, which is.
And you will supply the home.
Come on.
With invoices beyond what they give you. So if you are spending some of that, or any, they're gonna see those invoices to verify that's what you're putting into that building, they, they will have that availability.
I think the easier way to do it is to just put a percentage in the language, change the language to say twenty-five percent.
But, you know.
Word will have to prove that I.
I mean, it's just, it's just your word that you put into million, what if you only invest a full million? Now the county owns fifty percent of. Percentage wise.
Well, I can tell you now, because there's no way that that will happen. We're, we're seven hundred fifty thousand dollars just to get the building up to a, a usable state. And then the interior, we're still going to prevent on that, it's gonna be higher.
And I don't, we, we should prove what we're spending to protect. And a political, not just based on the.
We can do, we can do a final.
So I just wanna make sure that you're aware that that contract, you, I mean, you're telling the citizen wrong. I've heard it in the commissioner's meeting, I've heard the council meeting, I've heard it from you, but it's not the case that agreement that was signed.
That was not the intention of the.
Okay.
And we have, uh, maybe here from pause and clause.
I was asked to come, you guys had some questions regarding what the increase was going to be for twenty twenty-five.
Um.
Yes, you need.
Jessica, sorry, okay, the manager for the shelter.
And we, we had considered about, you know, twenty percent increase in the contract, and we had, um, Jeff can. Let him tell the whole story, I know Hillsborough called and they were told that it's not covered.
On Hillsborough?
On Hillsborough, so we need to know. What are we getting for our thirty-five thousand or forty-two thousand, what do you cover, because I know Attica has their, Attica has their own, so. Uh, we thought that thirty-five thousand covered the rest of the county that we were paying for. And evidently, that's not the case, because we had the same thing, Newtown saying that they told you don't cover that. So we wanna know, what, what are we getting for our money?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, so, right now, our contract states for Fountain County. That is not the towns that are incorporate with Fountain County, that is just the county itself, for animal control purposes and the shelter part, um, so. So like, we have a con, a separate contract for, uh, Petersburg, they're on their own contract. Attica has their own, Hillsborough had theirs a couple of years ago, we went to renew it, uh, for twenty twenty-four, and they did not want to sign it. So then we do not have Hillsborough as a town that we are helping. Um. Like Newtown, Malat, those, I think Newtown, Malat, Kingman. Um, those towns we don't, the only way we do those towns is if, like, the law. Needs us out there, hey, they, you know, had something come up, the law needs somebody to come out, then I go out and assist with them, then I will remove the animals. Um, other than that, if we did all of those towns, and like, within what you guys are giving us, the forty-two thousand for twenty twenty-four, um. Then we would need a bigger facility, we are not even seeing a downside from COVID. We are, um, with the costs of, to, for us, the shelter to run. For spaying, neutering, vaccinations, rabies checks, quarantining, dog bites that happen. Um, and then making sure that before I release that dog, give it, you know, they have their rabies and everything is going on, um, that's cost coming out also. Um, so keeping up with the infliction of the costs, uh, the labor for going up, we're still at nine to ten dollars an hour per staff. And a staff are coming for maybe two to three weeks and leaving, because they can go to McDonald's or somewhere and get fourteen dollars an hour. We financially right now can't even, you know, give the staff that come in a raise, they've been pretty much where they're at. Um, even for animal control, which is me, one other girl that's part-time, and then there is, I'm hoping to train another girl to get her out there. Um.
So that, that's small communities, there are, or that are incorporated, gates, ghetto, those places. If you're, you're, if somebody calls with those little small towns in the bigger.
Correct. So even if they're.
I, you know.
Yep, Riverside, um, Kingman, we had, I think, something. Kingman, we had a contract with them, and then we submitted it with the Hillsborough one at the beginning of twenty twenty-four, and they said no. And what we had dropped down to that was, if they needed animal control. Then we would go out and assist the situation, if the animal needed removed, we would bring it back, if they were, like, say it was a dog bite. If it was, if they on vaccinations and. You know, the dog just was doing it out of protecting, but the dog is okay, then we allow the ten-day quarantine where I go out every day to assist. That's because I don't have enough kennels at the shelter to pull that dog in for ten days, right now, we have. Forty-two dogs and fifty-three cats, and I still have dogs that need help, and I can't, because I have.
Take care of some dog.
Yes. So it's not that I don't help everybody in the area, it's just, I, certain areas don't have a contract because they haven't signed up. Um, Covington is not one of our area, the town of Covington is not an area, I have talked to the mayor, and. That's twice not talked to him, and he keeps saying no. Um, and I've even offered like the T and R program that we offer for our other contracted areas, to help with the colonies that are.
Do you have a breakdown of, since, you know, any of the incorporated towns, not Everton, Attica, you referred to. Um, of how many animals you have done, that the county is responsible for?
I do not have it with me today, um.
Get that for us.
I can, I typically do that in December, to send in to Tracy on December, so she has all of that to send in. But it's all broken down.
Right, you may.
So I know you have contracts with Attica, and then with us, where else does your income, income comes from? Do you do any, I search, just donations?
And we have one made, two made fundraisers we do here, that's it.
So your adoption fee just covers the service?
And looking at the contract, it just says residents of the county may partake in the program at no charge, so. I think the contract needs to be written better.
Is that.
Exactly what you're covering, this is the contract to the commissioners.
Interesting, so that would be with Tracy, so Tracy does the contract, I'm here speaking for her today.
Well, I, that's, then I, I think you need to go to her and tell her, you know. We're being told to come up with the money for this, but the contract says residents of the county, so that.
That led us.
That would be Newtown, Malat, Kingman, everybody.
Right.
And, um.
Is that the one that she sent in January, or is that the one back in twenty twenty-three?
This was, uh, January first, twenty twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, that's this year's contract.
Okay.
So. I think the contract needs to specify better on what is covered, and then Tom just gave me this report from January twenty twenty-four. And it's got Attica numbers, Warren County, it's got Fountain County animal numbers, but is that? Does that include just? What we're paying for, or does that include Newtown, Malat, Kingman, is that all the animals?
That's probably all of them.
Okay, so.
So that would be last year, and then this year, yes, they are getting all broken down into. So we can see what other town.
Yeah, so we could find out what ones are in the townships.
Okay.
Um. That would be appreciated. Anybody else have any questions?
I would just be willing to talk to Tracy, I know Tracy, and we talked about some things, and, uh, if she needs to call me to clarify anything, I'd be more than happy to.
Okay.
To her, so.
I can pass that sort of. Um.
So we pay, we pay a contract. With taxpayer dollars, the city of Attica pays a contract, they also pay taxes to pay for this.
Yeah. Yeah.
And Petersburg pays it, taxes to pay for this, and Malat, and Newtown, and Hillsborough, and Wallace, and Kingman.
Yeah, it's not covered.
But they're not covered, so.
So if we did something like that, that you're talking about, where you wanted it to be, you know, the one price for all of Fountain County. Then, yeah, we definitely would need a bigger building. And then that's where we come into money again, unless we. Maybe a different agreement.
Yeah.
Which will.
Township trustees, I don't know.
Also, your income totals up.
There's something else that can play with it. I'm, I'm, I'm having a hard time paying their state board exam.
Yes.
Hundred and sixty-two thousand. Is it total gross incomes, or is it profit?
Uh, yeah.
That's, that's a gross income.
Yeah.
About half of it is fees and don't, and then the other half.
So our twenty twenty-three overall total expenses to keep running the animals and the staff. Plus animal control to keep our doors open was a hundred and forty thousand. So we're not even, we're barely there. So if we drop some of our services, I mean.
Well, it sounds like you've already dropped some with Hillsborough, I'm not paying you now, Kingman's not paying.
And we're still at critical capacity and no growth.
Well, can you give us a breakdown of just what we're paying for, how many animals you got that were used?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, question?
Any other questions?
No, I, I just say you need help, the cats and dogs running everywhere, my question, if Covington calls you and they got a problem, with some animal, come get it, or do you have to help them out, I'm sure, no?
So right now, for dogs, um, I speak with Keddie Sowers, so Keddie Sowers and I talk with dog situation, um, I've helped him with a couple of dog cases coming in. Um, I know one particular was last year, um, and the dog just needed to be removed, it was more of a neglect situation, and he asked me to come home, so I did come home. Um, the cats, with the cat population, you're talking about here in Covington?
I'm talking, oh, who, Oliver, is it in that space?
Yeah, um, so we did start in twenty twenty-four, the T and R program, it's trap neuter release. And Tracy volunteers her time, and so does Erica, um, to do that stuff for us, which is helping colonies, but. You're, they're still getting released back out to the public, but they're not, you know, producing any by heart.
There's a shelter in, right outside Newport, that serves Vermillion County and Park County, they're at capacity. Their numbers proportionally would be the same as this, I have access to their numbers, so, pause and clause. Budget numbers are very similar proportionately, even though the counties of Park and Vermillion combined are larger than Vermillion County, just the numbers are very similar. Their, their capacity.
Do you ever have to disethanize?
Unfortunately, but not due to just doing it, the only time I do it is illness terminal. Um, if, you know, it's a dog bite, but the court, I came to court, and the court says the dog. Other than that, no.
Well, as far as the contract goes and making changes, that'll have to go to the commissioners to work out. With them.
Yes, and they'll be. New ones, because they'll, they'll already sign the contracts with this year, so. I'm sure they'll want back those numbers also, so.
Okay, thank you so many dollars to me.
Yes.
Yeah, we're so short for twenty twenty-four. So why not afford it for that?
Yeah, see. Question, who's on that note, and now.
You do that, I'm taking. Not what I do.
Well, then, Shawnee Towns.
Through the bean, through the bean field.
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna run out. I would think that all of the problems are gonna be in the town. Yeah, that's what.
Well, Atticus ran, run over with cats.
It's Covington.
I mean, just.
Sellers uses his own money to take care of the dogs.
They signed the contract, it says, any citizen of the county, and I will tell you, if it's covering. Right. With the additional, it's not very easy, it's covering the whole county, it makes you sound like it's not, so. You start to say something.
I just think half of your cities that aren't covered, what they do is they go down to the country, take care of them anyway, you know, it's. That, that happens all the time, but they drop them off.
That, and, and right, I mean, Attica's, they're paying tax dollars to subsidize.
Yes.
Our contract, but yet they have their own contract.
Asked for an, did you not, when they asked for an additional this year? That's my problem, is they said, oh, here's our money, this is what we want next year, then they came back and asked for an additional on top of their contract?
We budgeted the same amount.
Previously.
For as last year's contract, but then when the commissioner signed the contract in January. They raised it from thirty five thousand to forty two thousand. Yeah, thirty five thousand and they want paid additional, but we wanna know. Any other comments?
Doesn't it make sense that the towns will be calling everything, pretty comparable?
What's that?
I mean, doesn't it make more sense that the towns will be calling, Malat, Hillsborough, Newtown? Those kind of people, I mean, how many towns are rural?
That, that's what I just asked, I mean, Shawnee Township, you know, if you got a. Who's dog in there, it's going out in the field, you're never gonna find it, then in town.
But it doesn't make more, it just makes more sense that these small towns are going to call for that because our neighbors are being. Overran by animals or whatever, mostly in rural areas, probably not alone as often.
Well, what's gonna happen is people, people from those unincorporated and incorporated areas that don't have service by Paws and Claws are gonna take them to my house. Which is in the country. Cause they'll call them, yeah.
So I'm just gonna knock that, any more residents, but.
I just don't know what the, I mean, they'll have to figure out what their contract's gonna state. I wouldn't have signed anything that said that.
Colleen, have you already, have you been paying them the additional, are you in the red and that again?
In the red, I had, I had my fifteen hundred dollars left that they ate at one point.
But, but we don't have a nutshell, so you either need to only pay them what's left in the account.
That's right.
Or we've got to.
Say when we run out of thirty five thousand, that's all that means. I know, it puts you on the spot, but.
And really, we don't have enough to fulfill. The contract for twenty three because. It was short of two thousand dollars and then it raised to seven thousand, twenty three to twenty four, and that's worth a nine thousand.
So they were paid in twenty twenty more than what.
Twenty two, the contract was for thirty three thousand, twenty three, it was for thirty five thousand. And in twenty four, it was twenty two thousand. And due to the way the software system was at that time, it didn't pick up the additional that we did. Two thousand from twenty two to twenty three, so this year I asked for. I asked for a million thousand and then you guys turned it down.
That encompasses the seven and the two.
So that's where we're at here.
I always feel like we're never given all the information, not from Colleen, but.
A, a lot of it is the kind of the contracts, you know, our budget is set in twenty. And uh, twenty. In October and then a lot of the contracts are.
Paws and claws is under the assumption that they're gonna get forty two thousand, right, I mean. That's all they know.
Yeah.
And that's why I said, you know, they need to be aware.
But, and I, and I would be okay with the forty two thousand if. They follow the contract which says anybody in the county can call on service.
It's like your kid comes home on Thursday night, says they have a project due forty on Friday and they need a poster board at nine o'clock at night.
Uh, today, we have fifteen hundred dollars left.
And that won't even cover the two thousand we owe them for twenty three.
We, you did an additional twenty.
But it didn't pick it up.
The software program didn't pick it up?
Software. Did not, they don't, the software, the budget doesn't.
We need to at least pay that.
I know, since worked on changing that, so. Yeah, we're just. We're, I mean, we're back to. The money, cause there was thirty three thousand budgeted. For twenty four, which it should have been at least five. Then the contract. Forty two.
That's a big jump from thirty five to forty two.
From forty three, we were down behind, how much?
Two thousand dollars.
And then twenty four.
We, we paid it in the correct amount in twenty two and twenty three as to the contract. But this year we're short on the contract amount.
Cause the, the two thousand was paid in twenty four, but we didn't budget that extra two thousand. So now that two thousand plus the seven thousand that they want extra, it makes your nine thousand.
So we don't see what she promises.
That's not gonna change anything.
Back practice. They give us five hundred million dollars or five hundred two thousand. He can, uh, they only, they spent four point one five ninety six on their school project, which, which. Uh, paid back to our two hundred fifty thousand. And I visited with you and, um. It seemed like, and I'm not going to say I don't totally disagree, though, that we wanted to put that back in, here on the bed. Well, we're looking at in Hillsborough on a project for the. The state's coming through twenty six, redoing the road, the, the main street went thirty six through town. And the state says that. And they'll do some sidewalk work, but the sidewalk in the middle of town is the states. But they won't do anything to the steps in the sidewalk that's almost over a hundred years old. It's, uh, because of the canopy, it's a historical canopy, which has been changed through the war times. That's their excuse why they won't. So. Gary and we, uh, Eric, Brady and we have, have got an engineer and an architect. To lay that out for the state. So when they come through, as they're coming through Hillsborough, we're working. I mentioned maybe get five or six thousand dollars from your, uh, from the art fund that they have. Which they had hundred fifty left over to pay those guys. And I'm still wondering if we can do that.
Uh, the issue with Hillsborough is the land is owned by the state, it's one of these bizarre things that happened long ago. The land is owned by the state right up to the face of the private building, but the canopy is owned by the nose, you know. Uh, so you've got a side race sidewalk that is not the ADA, which is proven. And you've got a canopy that's falling apart, but it's in no man's land, it's actually over state property. So when the state came to town, they said, well, we're doing up to the curb and we'll do sidewalks, but we're not touching that. And so we had a meeting to negotiate a solution. And the best we could get out of them is they would allow us to come in with a proposal and, and get a permit to build it, but they're not paying. Of course, even towns, the towns don't pick up their sidewalks, they don't believe in downtown. So then you have to get each individual, uh, to pay for this on state property. So it's, it's just a convoluted mess and we're not getting cooperation. I've been trying to find grants for it, we built for LEI and a few other grants and they're all getting turned down because they don't own the land. And so our recommendation is, you know, let's try and help this community with a really awful situation. Rebuild the elevated sidewalk so it means A to A in the last long term, put the canopy back. They're willing to do their own work, they're willing to do it on the cheap. Um, but they need funds to do it because they're a small town and they don't have those funds and it's really not their responsibility. So it's a, it's just beginning, you know, let's help them, help themselves, uh, with money that's left over from.
So Jeff, you said they were allotted five hundred thousand, but they only spent what, four ninety two, five ninety?
And, and I was, as I was following, I'm doing floods there. Probably we'd come in, they didn't use it all, and somebody said, what else do they need? Something else that we need.
Well, Jeff, what I'd say is. We could, but it's gotta be a bill. By, it's gotta be presented. And the commissioners and the council will have to approve it, so it can't be done, but. We're in the timeframe, we're in the timeframe, we've got, you know, two months and two weeks. Um, both councils have to agree and you have to have. Is it a wait order in? Have, have a waiting order in process. And that's, and that's kind of why I was saying, let's take the money that's not been spent. So that, and that's why, I mean, my suggestion was to reimburse. Like for an, let's get that money reimbursed, put it in a county general, and we can also, when we do that. With the understanding, okay, we're gonna. Spend in that county general up to five thousand to Hillborough, maybe. A million of it towards a new county highway for our school. Whatever we gotta do to get both commissioners and councils to approve it, cause we sure don't wanna send that money back. Well, we, but. They're not in agreement of, of that right now.
But I think the number is what's left over, right, a hundred and fifty five thousand.
Now, we're talking, since we had that money from April corner, we're talking over a million dollars.
That is just what was left over from.
Yeah, from Hillsborough, but, um.
I know, and they're asking.
And we tend, and, and I'm okay with that. I, I'd just like to get it in county general by the end of the year, but if you get an agreement with the commissioners.
Okay.
And, but, and you can put, when we do that, the stipulation, you know, so much goes to Hill and Pearl. Uh, for that project and whatever we can all agree on. Is, I just don't want that.
So with that being said, with you, with, with us putting it in the county general, I would have. We just do that and then we'll work on what we're spending on, I'll be an annual way through that.
Then you wouldn't have to have, which right, you would just say, okay, we're gonna put that money into county general, but. Six, six thousand, ten thousand, whatever it will be for the Hillsborough sidewalk project to.
I mean, they, to be, to be quite honest and blunt with you. The whole hundred and fifty would about do the project. Yep, they do it themselves. But I'm going to do this, I, I, I'm gonna write mail the. My state senator and the young man is gonna take over. And work on them pretty hard too, so we'll see. Maybe even, I, you'll smile when I say this, maybe even the governor. So what's, what's our?
Do we need to vote on this to get it into the general with the dollar mouth, so we have a paper trail that?
Give it to the commissioners.
We'll need to, well, we've gotta figure out. How much there is, how much we can reimburse in county general. Come up with our plan and what we'd like to then present it to the commissioners. And maybe two weeks from today when we need, we can. Have those, the ambulance, what, we can get reimbursement of the ambulance, right? That may be, most of that money, I don't know, um, whatever else. And then, um.
Sixty five, you said.
So, um, and then we decide, you know, uh, so, and I agree, like Jim would be here.
Now talking about art. You understand.
Okay, let's. Thing Colleen made most of our changes on here except. Correction, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna remember to talk that out. And you didn't notice on our financial report today, they've. Public safety is down to seven thousand eight hundred dollars. Yeah, we're not, and I sent all of you an email that said we were not gonna have enough money in public safety. And a potential email of what. We want to collect next year, I didn't want to.
Not enough.
And you have. You have one of our luxuries.
Yeah, we were gonna move it to county general, that's what I have.
Say the twenty twenty five, you should did eight hundred and six thousand. Eighty seventy seven, so if we move sheriff, county general, that's eighty ninety thousand.
Yeah, eight oh six or thirty five.
Would be good.
I have one oh seven, five sixty nine.
Yeah, the these are this year's figures on here, so we're gonna have representatives on deputies. So um. Oh yeah, we moved sheriff's retirement out of there to county general.
Yep.
And that's not there, but.
It's it was like one oh seven, five sixty nine. One seventy nine, one ninety four would be your retirement and then share.
Yes, and she's already moved retirement, it's not on your under public safety. So we're to do move that to. So we want to move that sheriff salary there too. I think that was too much. Probably gotta decide about salaries. So, but maybe. Right, but where they said we said we take sheriff out, but we're also, we don't we don't have salaries in there yet either, right? Well, yes, but that's that we still have to do this down to everybody follow me on that. We'll take shares. Under public safety, sheriff's salary, we're gonna move it to county general.
Okay, under sheriff there.
Now, on the front page. We're probably gonna have to take out some social security, maybe take part of social security out of public safety or part out of sheriff.
But the sh- but the sheriff.
Maybe move the uh administration of records. So the administration of records. And sometimes we do get a little extra, even though the total is eight hundred and six thousand.
Okay, so the sheriff's salary, we don't set that. The state does, so that amount is not right because you gave us a figure of a hundred and seven, five ninety six, I believe, or five sixty nine. Questing twenty five.
These numbers are twenty twenty four sal- all the salaries.
Are the twenty fours, okay.
Twenty four, we haven't decided they don't take with salaries. That's why we won't go for sure if there's anything else we have to move until we just determine what we're gonna pay the transport officer, the chief deputy and all the deputies.
Right, okay.
Instead of having two different accounts being in for.
One person.
Yeah, it'd be easier for payroll.
Okay, so I'm ready to discuss salaries.
Yeah.
Everyone's got a list of what A I C gave us of counties are its eyes, where we stand um. And then we have this list of, of has an average, and then has one counties. So uh let's just start at the beginning here and go.
Sure. Natalie, does this figure about county, is that present, the present settlement? This is the present salary we're looking at. If you're gonna compare.
They they these are twenty four.
Yeah.
The yellow column, do you have the color? The yellow print, the yellow column is what they currently have been paid at twenty four, what was budgeted plus any additional for their total salary in twenty four.
It's blue with what was twenty three, right?
Yes.
And then the green is.
Green is what they're asking for in twenty five.
And we have this from A I C, what the numbers.
That's what those averages are, right?
Oh, the average is on. Did you do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the average county our size is thirty eight, six, three, six. Her requested is less than.
Yeah, that was the one that she requested less than kind of what an average should be or what. So I don't know that we've been given more unless we've got another category.
There's the average for similar.
And over the ninety six, seventy to the forty eight.
Okay, so we've got she advertised ten million, almost eleven million. In advertising, without sheriff, it's just a little over ten million, so we've got a billion dollars in there that we can.
So we could get from that.
Yes. Yes. So what um? Over question forty seven, two thirty eight, but the average is forty eight, six thirty six, county of their size. That's still five thousand less than five million.
I'm sure I got it, but I just.
You wanna go with the average?
I think it's important, in my opinion, to look at each of them and, you know, looking, sitting with the clerk. She's been in there a long time, you know, it's not a mean position. I think that's important to take into account too, instead of just across the.
Yeah, right, right, that's why.
The clerk who's been in that
Yeah.
office forever, I, that makes sense to me. I don't know what that percentage is, but pretty near, like, maybe at least forty five.
Let's do forty eight, six thirty six, and and then I'll link you get us on.
Forty eight, what?
Six thirty six.
Six thirty six.
That'd be the average forty thousand, oh two six.
I just sent that to the council.
Making your nose run?
Well, I'm breathing too.
Now, our deputies are willing to do. Pretty much all the deputies same except what we do. Auditor's office is flat now, I mean, because they do extra. Average is four to go to status.
Well. I mean, what we gave the clerk was about thirty four hundred more or twenty four hundred more. No, thirty four hundred. And you said it's forty, what?
Oh two six. That would be then, okay. I'll only put those in and we'll see.
See where we're at?
Yeah, okay, so auditor.
So you said forty one for the deputies.
Average forty zero twenty six.
Yeah, forty zero two six.
She will get nothing and she will like it. I'm teasing him.
I know, hey.
Forty four thousand, it's not going in here. There's no, there's not even.
I did that very quickly, so.
Seventy two, forty eight, forty seven, forty eight, thirty two, forty six, and fifty eight, so.
So one must have, must have counted.
Why don't we get Rush County? Waskey County, looking pretty good.
So that averages right, I don't think.
Fifty thousand, five oh two.
Fifty is the average?
Yes.
Okay.
Fifty thousand. What'd you say, fifty thousand?
Fifty thousand, five oh two.
Five oh two. So then that brings the deputies.
On the same line, they, yeah. And deputies be forty, oh two six.
It's like nominate yourself to be the president of some board.
See, some counties, their deputies aren't all the same.
Right.
In auditor's office versus treasurer's office versus clerk, so some of those deputies are different, but that's.
In here. And the auditor's officer.
Yeah, I agree, I think.
Now, I know, and maybe, and we give deputies in the auditor's office, not from black book, and then we should very sad.
That's on another line.
That's on another line. And yeah.
Well, the the ten percent might be too high.
Systems.
It was seven point five, seven point two, they're all three.
On the county auditor, did you determine that in the other?
Fifty five oh two.
Is that what we're going with? Yes, okay.
Because we're also give, and we need to look at that being the ninth meeting, because I think commissioners are definitely gonna have one head meeting on that then.
Flat book is sixty two fifty.
So then we go down to treasurer. Forty six, two eighty six.
But then Rush County, I mean, kind of offside.
I'm okay with that.
After what?
That forty six, two eighty six.
Yeah.
Okay. And first deputy, the two six.
Forty oh two six.
Yes. Finally, five eighty five. Forty five, five eighty.
Yeah, we don't want to.
I thought, I thought, oh, these were the.
Those are clearly just averages.
Twenty four, then, that you have not twenty, what they requested, right?
That's not what they requested, that was.
That's what they're getting this year, well, that's. That's what they're getting this year, well, that's the treasurer's getting last, so we. So we can't do the forty six, two eighty six. It's getting forty six, seven, twenty two.
Make it forty seven, I mean, now it's brand new to the office. So I think you need a huge jump there.
Right, so, but what's your condition? Forty seven.
Giving us a place to start.
Right, cause we did. We'll have a meeting to finalize everything.
What is the treasurer?
Okay, so, treasurer's new forty seven then.
So what'd we decide on the treasurer then?
Forty seven.
Flat?
So reporters, forty five, I would, I would, and that's the average, which she's already getting forty.
I think the deputies, you could leave at what was requested with the five percent.
Forty oh two six.
He just said, you know, the deputy in the auditor's office.
For, sure suggestion on the. Recorder, she's then come back, I mean, she's. Now the new person going in there. Getting forty five, seven oh eight, the average is forty five, five eighty five. Warren County is forty seven, two eighty nine.
Well, she's asking for forty eight, eight, forty seven.
She's asking for forty nine.
No, I'm under a sensor, I'm under the wrong.
Forty nine.
The three percent, that's her basically just right at forty seven.
Forty nine outside of nine is what she's requesting. For the reporters.
More fair to be.
I have that forty seven, nine, nine, three. On the recorder.
So I'm looking on. Denise's.
Yes, that. She's for twenty five, she's just.
How long she been in office, she's nine hundred, ninety dollars above, we just gave forty seven thousand.
I think you at least make her forty seven though.
Well, and she asking, it's the recorder, right?
Yeah.
She's asking for forty seven, nine, ninety three.
Forty seven, treasurer and reporter.
Who's gonna go with nine, ninety three?
One at forty seven thousand.
Okay, so then are we making the deputy the same?
Yeah. Forty oh two six.
That's where, we're saying the deputies in the auditor's office work harder, which you're gonna give the same to.
Yeah.
Money from the.
Okay, okay, so it'll be. That one was kind of crazy, I mean, I think there's different setups in different counties, but. So it's hard to even look at that average, cause you got more than eight thousand, you got seven thousand, I mean, they're.
They're all over the place, you know.
Yeah, that one's really.
So if you take the, the larger. One out.
And it's gotta be a new reporter, so.
Coroner.
Coroner, I mean, yes, will be a new person.
So twenty three.
What about eleven? That's for ten percent. How much, eleven thousand eight sixty? Yeah, just ten percent more.
Being a new person.
Yeah. There's two term, right, so.
Chief deputy.
My suggestion would be, and I'm gonna stay my mouth, but my mouth, if you're gonna jack up the coroner pay, check up the chief deputy's pay. This is traditionally fifty percent of, of the coroner pay. And there have been some years under half order for the chief deputy who has done all the work. And coroner, the elected official has, that's kind of been a great base. But a lot of it is great, but, um, so that's, that's something that.
We're gonna leave our corner at eleven thousand.
Forty seven, three, one, two is the average. So, we want to go with.
So.
Bad check clerk, it's half out of that, half of something. What's been saying is the.
We're twenty on.
That check clerk, and then what's for the other three of those?
I didn't get the number on the bad check alert, you went so fast.
Uh, voter registration deputy, that would be the same as.
The other deputies.
Veteran service officer.
You could make that the same. Hmm, I think that's anyone.
Have an average.
Well, five percent would get you at nineteen five oh two.
Yeah.
Needs a parade, they were a clerk type person, actually person might pull their funds exactly. Member of the conversation.
Nothing was advertised, so that was the problem there, so we were saying that he had to ask for additions if he wanted to add someone, was that what we decided?
I told you, I think I told you wrong on the veteran service officer.
Four nine two.
That's what I think it is, it's four nine two.
Yeah.
Eighteen, four nine two.
Nineteen.
Or nineteen, four nine two.
And got extension, so the first sex. Yes. Forty oh two six for them, extension.
Special project, like he changed things, which saved us money, but, so that one's a big increase, but it's cause he saved us in another category.
Yeah, he eliminated.
Yes.
Okay. Even more, putting this person second deputy. So special project, he asked for what?
Because he eliminated the part time, the next category. Put that down to zero and put it up into the special.
Yeah, he split.
He combined them.
Right.
And then what for the special nineteen?
Nineteen nine thirty.
And about teaching and demonstration, oh, extension educators, was that? That's okay, okay.
So we went with fourteen, forty, oh twenty six on the deputies and nineteen nine thirty on the. Special project assistant.
And zero, I mean, part time.
Yeah, it's zero.
Uh, council, council attorney, wanna increase that or be the same, okay, council.
That is not enough money. And I like Ken's idea, we don't have a line on for masseuse at meetings and.
Five percent.
I was trying, I don't know what the other percentages are, so we're gonna flat them out, so I don't know, but just kind of. What's the deputies?
Fifty three, twenty nine is per, per person. I'm sorry, I'm talking out loud.
The deputies, I think, are about a seven percent. Yeah, seven point one nine, and that's what I got.
So five percent would put you at the, at thirty nine, one sixty eight.
Don't do it for the most.
Thirty nine, one sixty eight, fifteen is your five percent.
Main ballot is nine thousand person.
See, I'm ready. I hope that's not my car.
Sixty five, oh, yeah.
Five percent would be, would get us at thirty nine, one sixty eight, fifteen.
What was seven?
That's total for everybody, it'd be fifty five, ninety five per meeting. Nine times seven percent. A seven percent is fifty seven oh two. Per person. Which gets it at thirty nine, nine, fourteen.
From seven, fifty seven.
Um, divided by seven, fifty seven oh two.
No, no, that's what.
Thirty nine, nine, fourteen.
Yeah, you gotta add a thousand.
Okay, so thirty nine. Nine, fourteen, plus a thousand. Forty nine, fourteen.
Forty thousand nine hundred fourteen.
Yeah, I'm gonna check. So thirty seven, three oh three, times seven.
You know, like there's.
Yeah, thirty nine, nine, thirteen.
Uh, joint meeting for the auditor.
Two thousand plus a share.
Yeah. Yeah, you're okay with that, Kim? Four thousand for the nineteen percent. Everybody okay with that?
If I leave seventy, seventy five.
Yes. Hey, Neil, let's move on now, except for math isn't right, three. Five hundred, two times a year is three thousand sixteen. We shouldn't have any election next year, so we shouldn't have.
Well, I do.
Okay. Absolutely, we don't need anybody for that, cause no election actually. You're on this practice, you know. I have a thousand, those numbers are right, right, oh, meals, nobody on.
She hear about action training.
Postage, what's your? Okay, contractual, cause I'm sure she's still about there. Probably six, five, okay, and travel, printing and advertising, ballots and instructions, should have that zero. Travel, printing and advertising, ballots and instructions, should have that zero. And maybe she has to. Order by the end of the year, well. She won't have an election next year, but she might have to.
Twenty six. Seventy five.
I can have any, only place, that's that's zero. Yeah, repairs and maintenance, a thousand.
Yeah, thousand dollars.
And fifteen hundred, seven hundred, okay.
So we've taken all this.
Okay, board of county commissioners. Solid ways, we have a site, one sound, some solid ways.
Set two employees.
It's two of them.
Two employees, right. For raise on solid. Is that ninety six thousand when we include that?
No, that's last years.
Okay.
I think they asked for three percent.
That's a small waste.
Solid one step, I think it looks like they asked for three percent.
Yeah, ninety nine thousand two two source.
And give them the raise.
It's, it's, so how many employees are in there?
Two.
Just two employees. And. Ask for six percent raise, which is forty eight thousand twenty three each. That's thirty one eighty four for until work. For the year.
They were asking, according to this, at three point three five percent.
And you say we try a few thousand. But we didn't give them the raise, we did highway. So right now.
Highway laborers are at fifty three four and forty nine.
That's requested, though, right?
That's what we put him at in twenty four. Requested.
Solid waste, they were asking for three point three five percent.
They're asking. On solid waste on that. In the location sign, right, you can't always start by.
So what, what's the two employees solid waste spending this year?
About forty five.
Oh, raised the. Usually run the same as the highway, we raised the.
Is that legit? I mean, should they? I don't know what they do. What does solid waste, do they do, they're on the hallway?
Do they what?
It's like the bands, ones that we. Sorted, they stored.
Hundred twenty tires that you found inside of. They weren't the only. Yeah, it happened over by Riverside too, it, it was like a huge amount of tires.
That was a couple of weeks later, happened at Riverside.
It sounds like a tire change in place, didn't have a way to get rid of the tire, so they decided they were gonna dump them.
Forty five thousand three oh five.
Forty five three oh five.
Forty five, three oh five, that's what they're paying now.
And.
Put in at fifty thousand, that's an eleven percent raise.
No, we don't like. I think you do a good deal.
So you'll have, you'll, you'll correct that number.
Fifty four oh six, we're pretty close. And that was a five percent.
They didn't see them.
So that's.
Who'd you see there? I didn't see it. It might be in here.
So on the solid waste, there's only two employees in there? Okay, so a five percent raise.
But the controller's paid out of that too, that same line item.
You're kidding. So that's not.
Would you say it's a control, they say? I think.
I don't either.
Solid ways, yeah, includes.
So there's plus the controller.
Each solid waste of the forty five three oh five.
That number's not right. So the two, and two employees get paid forty five thousand plus or minus right now. That's ninety thousand, so how much, what does the controller get paid?
Thirty more something as well, it's requested, right now it's three thousand dollars.
Okay.
So figures off.
Okay. Plan submission. Administrator of records.
That's new, right?
Right.
Are they gonna give somebody? I mean, I know somebody has to get paid, but.
There'd be commissioners that would. It'd be kind of like what Amber was before.
Right.
Signed, so, and we pay her. Locator thirty five hundred, others know the person, so.
Twenty thousand?
Thirty five hundred.
Thirty five hundred on the plan commission of man of records.
Yeah, but in twenty five, we asked for twenty thousand, Colleen put that in there. Thirty five is what was paid when I was scampering a lot of time, asking for twenty thousand. Yeah, she asked for, she put that in there. Wanted to remove some of that from her office.
So would push more work onto the.
Asking for twenty, part time position and twenty thousand. That's what was in the budget.
Where you got a foot up.
It'd be months and months, there is a lot, according to what Andrew did for us. There's a lot of work. Wouldn't she?
Three hundred dollars, I believe he gives. And they don't need everything.
But this twenty thousand dollar part time person isn't for that, it's for employee, right? We're talking about different. Make sure everything is advertised, it's right in the last phone in line on.
It was collect fees.
Yeah, we'd start charging fees, they're gonna have to take the fees. And it's too much put on one person or two offices, because it takes a lot of time online. I'm getting mixed signals from the ABC chairman as to what my role is. So, I'm not doing nothing like.
So, but where's that person gonna be at? I mean, it's gonna be under the auditor or at the.
That's to be determined. Yeah, and I'm the one that put that in there because of the. And I, I agree with that, I mean, if we're gonna put in these rules on the zoning, you gotta have somebody. And it is a part time person, and even. I have some feedback on that. If you set hours and they're supposed to be here. Certain times, the public will know that, we can put it on our website. That's when they can get permitted or can get that, yeah.
They all.
So we'll just have to add a line then.
Administrator of records.
Okay. Gotcha. This, can we back, I know we're going through salaries, but I just looked at the line above on the county annex. Is ten thousand dollars enough for utilities? I know we discussed this, but we were gonna find out about the internet. Did we find out if we can do that or? Okay. Moving on.
Okay, four, four.
That was twenty four.
Yes. Four, average is forty one oh one one. Four counties, forty nine eight oh two. I mean, it's anywhere from thirty five thousand to forty five is the most paid in.
Some of those averages are tough because they're so hard.
Yeah. Four one is now, so.
Yeah.
How long has Suzie been there?
Eighteen years.
Fifteen years.
You looking for them?
How long's their, Birmingham County, they've been there.
And there's two, Lane's been there probably five years. But they have, I don't know since Judge John, I'm not sure. I'll put it at the forty nine.
Same.
To be comparable.
Good, though, then.
The tailor.
How many years the clerk's been there and she's making less than that.
Yeah. So maybe that's too high, yeah, I don't know. The clerk would put at forty eight, six thirty six. So, do you want me to lower that, or is that what you're saying, lower that a little bit? Put it at forty eight?
Then this is the average. Forty four, six to six.
That one's eighty, that's eighty thousand.
Yeah.
I mean, that, I probably left that one off, because that would be.
But my gosh, that's almost like double everything else.
Some of these, I mean, they're making forty five, thirty nine, thirty nine.
Eighty thousand.
Eighty thousand, so I mean, some, like I don't know if I left off the ten fifty now or eighty thousand, because those. Kind of skew things, if one's being made eighty, it seems like they're doing something else, so. And that seems crazy.
I would just ask you those few things, I don't know, you have to also keep in mind that. Twenty five one, in hours, it's a little one.
And I understand that, but y'all still don't think the office holders. Put a lot on their heads and they're, they see people making more money than them. That aren't a department head, they're gonna really.
And, and I, I acknowledge that and I understand that, that's why I gave you all the information that I gave you. It's a skill set, I just hired somebody off the street. I would advocate them if I could. But I don't do their budgets, and I know I'm that position to open a whole year, that I needed anybody to take it for the value.
Forty four, forty five, somewhere.
And I don't mean to take them in the middle, in a way, it's a solid waste of people, but it's very hard for me to tell for bailiff. About the skill set, people make more, and obviously anybody who's full of skills, if you make more. Probably anything in your side of the container. Than nothing here. That's really where we should.
Yeah, forty four, forty five, we did it, everyone was at least one.
Four, did you say forty four?
The equation is. Based on your first item, so the record numbers.
Well, she had eight years of experience, she's twice that important for her, so I would give her to be that same. As I'm meeting a new court bailiff.
So, that raise, oh, you'll be having a new court bailiff. They didn't raise the pressure, so.
Just something to, to fill the position, I asked for forty three six on the bailiff and forty nine on the court board, who's been here. For nine years, eight or nine years.
So, bailiff is company news, so forty years.
What'd you say, Stephanie, on that bailiff? So did we go with what she asked for, the forty three, six eighty on the bailiff? So did we go with what she asked for, the forty three, six eighty on the bail up? What did you guys decide again?
Well, that's, I mean, we didn't give the county treasure a very big raise since it's a brand new person.
The treasure go up.
Okay, so what, what's being forty four?
Maybe go ahead and change that a little bit.
Dropping.
Three hundred dollars. Not quite three hundred dollars, which is good here. Since it's a new position.
So where we land at on? And then did we, then the court reporter?
Or do you have to? Of the administrative, this information, say that's. The deputy, so be forty oh two six.
Let's recap this column. So the court reporter. Stephanie was asking for forty nine. And some change, right?
Forty four.
It's one.
Forty, it's almost ten percent.
So court reporter number two, what you're calling small things is one. Forty nine?
Yeah, forty four.
Suzie.
She's, I have, she's at thirty nine nine.
That's what we're number two.
You know, you know.
I think that's the typo, I don't, it's it's not, that's what. Paying their, their person that knows fifteen years. Salary is done again, as what I said, that's why I asked.
So.
That's the chief, yeah.
Okay.
Forty half the chief formation. That's.
Four, then she gets five thousand extra.
Forty two, right? And the other one is the forty two five.
Three twenty one.
Three twenty one for chief.
Sixty nine. Three two twenty one.
And what about second probation officer? Fifty eight, four three. Forty judge.
And she has. How many years experience?
It's fifty eight or seventy three. Oh, well, that's, it should be.
Fifty eight, four seventy three, third, second probation.
And then we have the third, but that's on the separate.
Forty judge.
The same, I believe, escape. I would say I'm likely using her. But. I have heard that he took.
You're gonna lose your debt debt price.
I mean, well, I'm sure the whole yet. Definitely counting most is maybe higher or full time, full time. I'll try and replace it. But.
Probation service.
Or now safety officer.
That may be wrong, calling it was you or was you all that told me that I have something. And there was some.
What's that?
Said they were asking.
Probably. Yeah, I'm a big.
Yeah, what he did once. Yep.
Fifty eight, oh fifty eight.
Yep. We did an additional ten thousand, seven, eight, eight during the year.
Um, we need, which is probably do right now. Help you all, I just made it's. The overtime's coming out of my budget.
Well, these two. Pretty close.
Yeah, because he was. He was forty seven, two five oh, which is correct.
Those together.
Right, but. That's a good idea.
So the courthouse safety officer.
We need to look at the sheriff department, it doesn't, he has to be the.
Yeah, because he's one of the.
Yeah, I mean, we need to wait.
You wanna do like emergency management? Save the bigger ones for the twenty eight?
We done with circuit court.
Well, the officer. Do the sheriffs.
Yeah, that that was me, and I was giving back to full time.
From there, emergency management.
Where's our.
Emergency management page four at the bottom. On the big sheet.
Page what?
Page four at the bottom.
Really don't have. It's a big.
The director's asking for fifty. Is that the one we're looking at?
I think so.
I'll bring it to forty five.
What did she cut out?
Average is on one forty instead of that. This year's forty two.
Forty two this year and ask for fifty one. One second.
Assistant director definitely correct, one of those is.
The assistant director you did away with, right?
Yeah, away with the assistant director, right?
No, it's still on the budget, she doesn't have.
Because I'll eventually hire.
Okay.
But.
But definitely.
Because I'm not just putting anyone in there.
So you're, you're.
I'm doing what I can, yes, and I have someone in mind. But. I I can run the department. But if I wanna grow with more, I don't need that to be taken away.
How long's it been since you had someone in there, just a year?
Well, almost a year, a quite year. Yes. Great in there, so right now I'm gonna be ready, we need to.
Ten percent. Yeah.
That's why it's, yeah.
A ten percent is forty five, three eighty four.
That's yeah, okay, but the average is forty five, eight fifteen.
So. When we went for the raises. Last year, they were supposed to be at forty eight thousand. Because if you can start until the end, it still shows. The lower. And.
Or or salary this year.
Yeah.
It's, it's because I didn't get, I didn't start getting a raise until the end of. Um, February, the middle of February, end of February. So it technically, when I came for the raise last year and everybody agreed with it, was forty eight thousand, whatever. So this year I was asking for a five percent raise only, which would bring it up to that. So it was already in here.
So, so. Salary for this year is forty eight?
It you, for some reason, it didn't show. Because it wasn't retroactive back to January one, it was.
We didn't do any additional. That's why it's not in there, I'm sure, okay. So forty eight is over.
Well, and I did all that because I do bloodline. And I do the extra, if you go around to the EMA, I just went to one hand, I had a talk with them, some of them. A lot of the EMA's don't do blood. Thanks, they hired. But Joe has always done it, and then I have continued, but now you have to be certified. So now I went through all the Chinese.
So certified, but.
That is.
And they get paid.
The bloodline?
Yeah.
To be a cert, if you go out and just be certified by bloodline, you can make pretty good money, oh, so.
Okay, so that would be.
Forty eight, seven, forty one as well.
Adjournment, I'm not an adjournment, but it's add them.
Forty eight, seven, forty one.
So he ever heard any kind?
When you compare to the other offices.
So. How do you go about trying to find that out, anybody else in the state? You know, how many, how do you go about by adding this? Extra. Situation for your.
Extra, I take care of the Sam's number for the county, I take care of the bloodline. Anything in, I'm gonna be clear. I'm unique because I'm in the courthouse, anything for this courthouse to be done, I am willing to do whatever. And I I feel like I've held my, my own here.
So when we pay her. A portion of her salary comes out of the deputy director, correct?
You did last year. By the council, we transferred money just. I was this kind of time, what was the last meeting, that six thousand? Came out with deputy director so that we wouldn't have to ask for an additional this year.
Okay, so moving forward, we have to pretend that her salary is actually written on record somewhere as forty eight, seven, forty one.
In this.
Okay, so she's asking for a five percent increase, which puts her at the fifty one and some odd dollars. Well, that gets her between halfway between the fifty is the highest. Because Warren County is only twenty five. Right, so fifty two.
More, I will say Warren County, you can't, they don't have any EMA right now, but they are talking about finding a hidden full time. At the court, the attorney number forty seven.
About county surveyor.
The EMA. No, they, we just had a meeting with them, exactly the meeting with three EMAs. From different counties, Ben, me and Vermillion, and Vermillion makes forty seven something, and they don't give it.
And I'm saying it. Warren County doesn't have an EMA director, but I'm sure that the former probably does, some of that, not former, the surveyor. That's like the blood planes.
Oh, I know. Extra stuff.
So your deputy director, you took money out of deputy director. To pay that, to pay her. To bring it up the acreage. So, we still wanna hire a deputy.
Eventually, I would like to hire a deputy now, I can't tell you, I don't know if it's wanting to be full or part time. I guess I could say it could be part time, but if I have to come to you and say, hey, listen, this is how it's got, you know.
So are you gonna have an assistant?
No, you, Gray is in my office because of landfill.
Right.
It comes out of there, it is salary.
Comes out of the assistant. Yep, I knew there was, yeah.
We can either.
I, yeah.
Yeah.
I should have been in a landfill.
It, well.
For landfill, pay his salaries.
But it's been that way for eight years.
Yeah, I know, it's been there, so. Okay, so we need to sign on salary for.
Uh, thirty seven thousand certainly gonna be, even like that, which is part time.
No, 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 we're talking about the director.
You were taking, you took money out of the deputy director. For this year, so.
You can't touch it.
We're looking thirty seven thousand, if you go back to what we paid deputy director in the other offices. You might wanna think about that again.
Well, and she's. She's certified to do what she needs to do in front of her job.
It used to not happen out of that.
Right.
Something I have to keep in mind, she's public safety, she's not under the courthouse.
Right.
You know, she's in the courthouse, she's not a courthouse, she's public safety. And we get reverse for, that's forty percent of your expenses. Maybe not quite as much.
Well, I will tell you, they, a lot of the cameras around get eighteen, and I still get my thirty two based on them.
Brian, what do you do? Five percent of. Till what? Nineteen to seventy one for great.
That's the assistant.
Yeah, reimbursement for the two.
Then who's paid the, who's paid as the deputy director for thirty seven three?
But are we gonna move that to forty oh twenty six like everybody else?
Oh.
I thought you did.
Well, but it's, it might, it might be a part of time.
Okay, so leave it. So what'd you say on the assistant nineteen?
Two seventy one.
Thank you. So the thirty seven, three, forty one has not been used, but we're leaving it in there. About forty two twenty six, is that right?
Yeah. But she said you had to leave it.
Only because she might want to hire somebody. Might. You know. Everybody wants to.
But she's public safety, so that kinda makes it a little bit different.
What word we at now?
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, well, I thought the assistant director is what you didn't have, just paid it.
What's the?
Three, ten, four, oh, three, I thought that was Greg. Is the assistant, or deputy director is what you don't have.
We're leaving that deputy director pay in the budget that we currently don't have or haven't had.
That's what we need to decide, if you wanna leave that in, or.
Cause I actually, when I came, if you look, I asked for a five percent, I went ahead and gave a foot five percent of for Greg, when actually I shouldn't have to give any of that. Should be you guys doing it, you guys decide what you want. And then I left the deputy alone, but I'm not saying that I won't just hire a part-time. And you have to remember, I get most of my pay back, so when I'm asking for something, it isn't like I'm trying to, to find where you get it.
It's your pay, not somebody, like, not the assistant director or director. You get reimbursed for. Okay.
I get it, yes, is what I'm trying to say. So.
Is it, what percentage? Do you know what it is?
Right now, I've got fifty percent in. So that's why I'm, I'm trying to.
So why don't we just move her to five percent? She's getting reimbursed. I mean, what, I mean, it's a thousand doll, I mean, it's eleven hundred dollars. And she's part of public safety, so I mean. Forty-eight, seven, forty-one, am I right?
That's what I wrote down, supporting.
And she asked for a.
I mean, one oh five percent, it's fifty-one, one seventy. And what do you, okay, what do you wanna do on the deputy director? Make it twenty?
Do you wanna, do you wanna put something in there?
I, I would, yes, because.
Do you, do you think that'll be a full-time position, or do you think it'll be starting at?
How, who you find, I'm, I'm not gonna do what I thought I was, how I started out first year. I, I can't do that. It's not beneficial. Right now, I depend on Greg to do most of the stuff when, like, I take care of all the paperwork. And yes, all the responders have a good relationship with me now, but like, if I'm at somewhere and I need someone to take something, then I can call Greg. Greg is there for me. So I don't, you know, I don't want you to just take it all that, all out of the way. Then I gotta try to find someone, like, cause Greg is probably wanting to retire in two years. So then.
At which point you may decide you wanna just combine the two and make one position.
Yes, I will not have three. There will never be three again.
So what if we?
Three because you guys have three.
Some also, you know, two is, is, you gotta, uh, citizens, because if she's not available, we're gonna take that to the job.
Still below the assistant.
Twenty-five thousand, and then you decide it's gonna be more than part-time, then you.
If, if we cut that thirty-seven, three, forty-one in half, it's eighteen, six, seventy, that's below the assistant director.
And if you did twenty thousand thirteen, it would be half of all the first deputies.
Yeah, okay, so twenty thousand. What'd you say, twenty thousand?
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thirteen.
Twenty thousand.
Thirteen dollars.
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Tina.
Yeah, they're very good.
Okay, where do you guys wanna go next?
If, if, we think we have time for these guys over here.
He's got a meeting at two o'clock.
I had one of one, I missed it.
Oh, you have one, you have. Sorry. I really would like, I, I suppose never gonna be here, cause I'd like some of his input on the EMA's, what he does. I still can elaborate on that, I talked to him last Monday. He basically told me he wants to leave alone for two, three months. Now we're fully staffed, we're bringing in part-time people. And see where we are, and if we, if we're still having issues, then we would start looking at, like, start to hire one. As a employer, and then work our way that way. But he made a suggestion, he wants to leave alone because we're fully staffed.
That's a short one. We know that's gonna be.
Leave alone where it's at. I think we'd have, we've got some time, we can look at these, if you want to. Secretary of course will be the same as the.
Secretary of what?
The secretary of the ambulance. No, she, she just pays more than the court here because she has more responsibility. Thirty-seven, three, forty-one. I think she's at forty, but we raised that.
That's what we have them all at.
Forty thousand, twenty-six dollars. That's what we have. I don't.
Forty thousand, three, twenty-eight, but.
I think it shows thirty-seven, three, forty-one.
That's last year, yeah, current.
Yeah, so it's forty.
Yeah, so the forty-oh, two-six.
Yep. And it's just shy of what he was asking for.
I put in an eight percent raise for the director and assistant director, so I put on down eighty thousand, seven, thirty-five. Assistant director is seventy-five, ninety-five. I also tied in the training officer, and that too, we have, by, by state, we have to have a training officer designated, give him an eight percent raise. Puts him at thirteen hundred dollars, that's spread out over the twenty-six pays. Okay, so, and, and objections to the thirteen hundred for the training officer?
No, I don't have any objections.
Okay, and let's go ambulance director.
Um, most of those are there outsourced or someone else.
How'd you come up with the eight percent?
Uh, because, uh, two years ago, you guys gave all the other employees a ten percent raise, you know, and you give us, there's an extra seven. So I flipped it around, gave us the eight percent, gave the employees five percent. Cause my understanding was you guys don't give everybody across the board a ten percent raise. And unfortunately, the administration did not get it. We did get a seven percent raise, but the ones working the truck had a ten percent raise. With the workload that we have, the responsibility applies from up to eight percent. The one thing you gotta keep in mind too is, not only we work in the office, we also have the car. We stop the truck pretty regularly, that's why I like, that puts down to eight percent.
I mean, you have an assistant director. Maybe, these are all things that, you think they're not some ways, but they're also taking our golden towels. If he's got that long fall, then, then we consider all the time.
So as the employees, advanced EMTs, anti-basic paramedics, uh. When we made the salary change for twenty twenty-four, in a discussion back in December, uh, December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Um, I wasn't too sure, but I thought there was some discussion that we would forego. A raise for twenty twenty-five. Wasn't sure about it, I reached out to Colleen, I reached out to Dudley, I reached out to others on board, can't reflect remembering. That conversation, and I actually went back and listened to the December eleventh meeting, uh, and what we're called, uh, saying yes or no on that. Uh, I will tell you, the meeting that we had, had with ambulance service two months ago. Tom, Kelly, uh, Jeff Fisher was there, Aaron was there. I think the consensus from the group, so, so where we don't lose money, most of them said. Would forego their five percent raise, we would leave alone. Am I, am I incorrect? So what I did is I came back to you guys, I think on the sixteenth of September, and I gave you the new projected numbers. Over time, which should reflect six hundred and fifty-one thousand. Yeah. The advanced EMTs, which will have seven advanced EMTs, be three hundred and seventy-six thousand. Uh, your EMT basics, like I said, five, that's two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Your paramedics, there'd be ten of those, it would be six hundred and forty-two thousand. And that's taking the five percent raise out.
What'd you say the last number was?
Six hundred and forty-two thousand, that's for paramedics.
Thank you.
That's twenty-two employees, eighteen of those employees were twenty-four hour shifts, so they worked the twenty-four on, forty-eight off. Four of those employees were. You guys asked for the options that I had been explaining to you verbally and writing. And I posed that to you a week before the thirtieth. Uh, go back to that, is there, what questions do you guys have on that, on the options?
I looked at all the options. I'm okay, you know, you got a salary here. I'm okay with that. I just keep thinking to myself, how can we? And still pay overtime, how can we get that overtime stuff down? I mean, that's what's really kicking us off. And I understand, I understand. Uh, and I looked at all those options.
I think you're, the one I was gonna go with, I would say option two, when you look at option two. Uh, and the only reason I put that in here, I didn't put that in there necessarily, that that would be the option we would go with. But that, one of the options that I explained to you that, an organization that I reached out to, Ploton County. Uh, EMS runs this program, the twenty-four on, seventy-two hours off. Um, you're gonna have thirteen pays, or the what they call long pays. Uh, and then you're gonna have thirteen with a short base. One week and that, thirteen short, you're only working four hours. So when you look at the numbers, the paramedic, seventy-two thousands change. That's less than what they were making in the old system, the old system that we changed from, the fixed salary, plus waiting hours.
And you'd have to find six new employees.
Plus.
Yeah, which won't be easy to do.
Um, and so that's why I gave the options, option three, if you look at option three.
Yeah.
Option three was what, um, um, Aaron suggested, leave it alone. Bring in the two floaters, those floaters fill in for like vacation time. Also, there was a comment made in the group being that. If the individuals volunteer on their long week, the week they work Sunday, Wednesday, Saturday. If they volunteer to give up one of those days. Forty-five days in advance, let us know, we could utilize possibly these floaters, fill in that. That was one of the options I read to you that, that, you know, Aaron was talking about, was that. Uh, also fill in on vacation time, where we couldn't get part-time people to fill. Um, and the last option we put in there, if there's no positions to be filled, we would just let them work for two days a week. That's a little concerning, because I think you're gonna see your, you're not saving any money in your overtime. Per se. So I kinda talked to some, you know, uh, other, I've reached out to other organizations and I've talked to them. Um, I know we don't like to hear this, but this is, this is the industry. This is the EMS fire industry right now. A good friend of mine, he's a lieutenant on Avon Fire Department. Uh, they, they're constantly, and I know they're higher tax base, you know. Whatever you wanna look at, but they are in the same situation we are. Having to find people to fill in those spots, or full-time people fill that in, to get that extra overtime. I talked to Park County, same way. I talked to Jason, Benton County, same situation. Ploton County, same situation. It's just, that's the industry, working the twenty-four hour shift, that's the industry. I do have, I do have a question for you guys. Uh. And maybe I'll give me a perspective, where it's at, where are we at on EMS let tax? Are we gonna think about it? Are we not gonna do it? Well. Council, it's a new council, with council of time, when we got the special let tax, had to make a promise to, uh, Senator, um. And Sharon Nagle, that we would not put on any more taxes, because that would put us as one of the highest tax counties in the state. If you put any more taxes on that, it's the only way they would write the legislation to put that special let tax on. So one, two percent, so I make us that high, because that's what for taxes. We're, we're in the top third of the tax counties in the state right now. Well, I reached out to three county offices, popular directors, and they all three have hired employees, but they don't have a special let. They do have, they do have, they have taxes within that. There's only about five counties in the whole state that have the special let to pay for jails. And that's, that was the promise to Phil Boots. Now, when January counts, new council, they might wanna do that, but. I made a promise, and the, the members of the council made a promise, that we would not raise our taxes. Right, do you know that, I think it was eight hundred and seventy dollars, eight hundred and seventy thousand projected, that's fifty-four dollars a year per person, right? Cause don't they figure it on the population? Uh, based on income. So based on income, okay. I will say, the three entities I talked to, they put theirs in place because they knew down the line, they were running the same situation we're running into right now. Same exact thing. And people are screaming now about their property taxes, and you take more money out of their. This is income taxes, and not, and it's separate. Well, it's income tax. You're paying for a service, you're paying for any. I, I just asked, you may answer my question. I, and I have, you've looked at legislation, Phil Boots may have put in there that if we raise taxes, that our let will be lowered. I, I don't know, just, he did make this, make that promise.
And doesn't, doesn't that affect your seed it too, if we?
I, yeah, I don't know, that affects it, cause it, I know.
If you do a redistribution.
Yes.
It may affect your seed it, which we're already having trouble with our seed it.
Okay, that's my second question, can you redistribute the money, the money?
Right, how, you can, but then it starts affecting your seed it, and our seed it funds are low, the way I understand it.
Yeah, public, the public safety is, we're gonna have to take money out of county general this year, because. We're down seven thousand and all the sheriff's payroll is out of public safety. We got three payrolls next month, so. I know it's concerning on your side, I, I. I can't, the crystal ball will probably not change. You know, and I don't know how we're gonna sustain, and, you know, looking at that funding that can come in to help offset that cost, will be huge. I bet, I think if you ask people in the community and knew that this was going towards EMS, I would be surprised to know that the majority of people are still okay with that. But anyway.
Okay, he's asking for eight, if we do five. His would be seventy eight, four ninety two. And on the assistant director at five would be seventy three, eight twenty three. Seventy three, eight twenty three. And some change.
I do, I. I don't know how old that year all has been, and proved in two weeks, I, I really think, and I know you guys are accomplished, but I think we should take. One night next week.
I agree.
I do, I do too.
But there's just so much to go over.
I agree. By that way.
Let me look at Monday, everybody look at Monday.
You get it?
I'm available Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and Thursday, and Friday, all day next week. I'm available every day.
What option did you really like?
And if you wanna do evening meetings, so people don't have to miss work, I'm fine with that too.
I think we just can leave it alone. I think we'll, they go home for now, you know, let's get two, three months into with, with the fully staff. Need hire more part-time people as we speak, you know, and let's look at where we're at, you know, I, I'm. I think we can have a good hold on it by the end of the year, first of next year, and see where we're at.
You'll have a good picture.
And then we can look at, if we think we've gotta hire more people in, we can hire more in.
Right, and you have new commissioners, and they can make that right.
That's my record for now, I know we, for a while there, we were having a hard time getting people hired, and we're full, and all, as we speak. And we're getting people to apply, because they're hearing, people in the state are hearing what we're paying. You know, and so it's, it's getting more people coming in, we're getting people out of our E T classes, are applying for positions to do, so we're getting that. I think we also need to look at. I know you're getting ready on your leave, I think we need to be looking at, I can talk about that next week, is, is, I think you need to look at increasing the hourly rate on your part-time people.
To maintain.
Yeah, I think. What, full-time taking that, or close to it?
Especially if you get a good pool, and it reduces your pool, you pay them a little better, and they're gonna stay, I think.
So Monday night, work for everyone?
It does for me.
Come on, me, you wanna start at five?
Let's start at five, then maybe we won't be here till midnight.
Okay. Five o'clock, Monday night?
Yeah.
You're at, uh. So, um. Do you want me back here at five o'clock, go through this with you again?
Yeah.
On Monday, okay.
Monday.
Say if I can get it on here soon.
That might work for him better too.
Okay. Um. So. On the equipment purchase, obviously, I need to go back to the commissioners for that, which I plan on, I talked to Aaron. Aaron did see the presentation on asset management program, um, we just wanted to see the big work, which I'll send that to him. Uh, and it's obviously we have that approved by them. We bring that to them on the twenty first, so you guys know. Which way we're, you know, going, or leaving.
Is that, that for next year though, right?
Yes, okay, yeah, so. Here, here's one thing, two, number one, so price increase will come October first, we're locked right now, so November, first of November. I'll lock it, whatever, the ALF three sixty or the EMS plus program, either one. But we don't have to pay that until all the equipment is here. And that'd be actually be like next February, March. So.
Well, then, next Monday night, if you don't know what commissioners and site again, well, this is. Operating, I mean, uh, yeah, looking out, right, and put them on Monday morning. And so, we will.
Reset. It's just a hero.
Monday, the.
It wasn't all right.
Thanks, guys, it's time. A lot of guys.